S F U S D will provide closed captioning and American Sign Language A S L interpreter services throughout today's board meeting. Live transcription can be found here. H T T P S colon backslash backslash W W W dot stream text dot net backslash player question mark event equal sign S F U S D dash board. Attendees who wish to provide public comments to the board and would like an A S L interpreter can use the Q and A box in the Zoom app to type their name or handle and list the item or items on the agenda they would like to comment on. The attendee will need to have a functioning camera in order to communicate with the interpreter and board. When it is the attendee's opportunity to provide comment, the Zoom host will promote the attendee to panelist and enable the attendee's video. Translation, go ahead, please.
Can you please promote both of the sign language interpreters to host?
Thank you. S F U S D is offering interpretation services in Spanish and Cantonese. If you need interpretation, please add the following phone number. After dialing, please introduce the P number. This number will be, this message will be repeated in Spanish and Cantonese. El Distrito Escolar Unificado de San Francisco ofrece servicios de interpretación en el idioma español. Si necesita interpretación por medio de Google Meet, por favor marque el siguiente número telefónico seguido de la clave de acceso. Uno, tres, uno, nueve, tres, ocho, dos, nueve, seis, siete, seis. Por favor, introduzca la clave, seis, seis, cinco, nueve, nueve, seis, nueve, siete, seis, seguido de la tecla numeral. Gracias. Cantonese interpreter, please. Thank you.
Thank you. 如果哪位需要我们的这个服务，麻烦你致电去我们的Google Meet号码 Thank you.
That concludes translation services.
Okay, at this time, which is six thirty one, the board will reconvene from closed session and I will read, uh, read out from closed session. Uh, the first item for closed session is, uh, one vote on student expulsion matters. Uh, I move the expulsion agreement of one high school student, matter number two, zero, two, three, dash, two, zero, two, four, dash, zero, one, from the district for the remainder of the fall twenty twenty-three semester and spring twenty twenty-four semester. Can I have a second?
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Thank you, President Bogus. Student Delegate Simpson? Oh, this roll call vote, sorry, apologies. Commissioner Alexander?
Yes.
Commissioner Fisher?
Yes.
Commissioner Lamb?
Yes.
Commissioner Matamidi?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Vice President Weisman Ward?
Yes.
President Bogus?
Yes.
Seven S?
Thank you. Uh, the second item is the report from closed session, uh, in the matter of student R O B versus San Francisco Unified School District, O A H, case number two, zero, two, three, zero, six, zero, five, nine, one. The board by a vote of seven yeses gives the authority of the district to pay up to the stipulated amount. Okay, and with that, we will begin the process of transitioning to, uh, our item D, the discussion item. Just wanted to share a few words, uh, before we do. Um, just wanted to, to clarify, uh, for everyone that the board is not gonna be voting on school closures tonight. Uh, but we are gonna be having a conversation about our structural deficit um, in the ways that we are looking to solve that deficit to have better outcomes for students. Um, and so I just wanted to lift that up and to, I think, make that, um, clear for folks because I know that initially there was an item that was set for action that has been, um, removed. Um, just really wanted to give clarity about kind of what we're doing today and it being a part of our bar broader process of aligning our school district, um, to really meet our goals and to meet our fiscal needs. Um, as we have, um, state advisors who the state has sent to support us in that. Um, and so with that, I will transition us to move to the tables and then we'll have the superintendent share with us.
All right. Um, good evening, everyone. Uh, good evening, commissioners and welcome to our student board members, student commissioners as well. Um, thank you, President Bogus, for introducing our, uh, workshop this night. Tonight, we're going to have a conversation and we have a conversation about why our system isn't working for our students and why we need to come together as a community to pursue bold ideas. And so when I say our system isn't working, I do want to acknowledge the bright pockets of excellence that I see every day as superintendent. But as I talk to our students, our staff and our community, um, the system itself isn't working and that's really right from the beginning that people enter our system. So I say from the beginning because what's the first thing family need to do? They need to enroll into our schools. And so, uh, I was just talking with a community member the other day who I asked if, if they have kids in our schools, they're gonna be enrolling a student for next year. And she said she's gonna have a, it'll be her first kindergarten student in school and she said, I'm dreading the process. And that's, you know, heartbreaking to hear, like, as a parent, you know, when you enroll your child in kindergarten, it should be an exciting experience, but I knew what she was speaking to. She was speaking to the fact, the process, she wasn't sure where her child would get assigned and didn't have confidence that wherever she got assigned, that the school would be a good fit for her. And so, you know, th- that's not the experience we want from the beginning, especially because then I go to school and, and I'm visiting during the first week of school and I'm at Cleveland Elementary and go into kindergarten classrooms where I see kids experience joy in our schools and like learning to read from the first day of, of school. Um, but it's too arduous of a journey to even get there for many of our families and that's not the experience we want. Um, we want them to have that joy throughout their educational career and even beyond kindergartners, uh, kindergarten and I see students, uh, uh, have joy in our schools. And so last year I got to talk to students from Balboa where they have a video game design program and they were, um, showed me the game and I got to play the game with them and you could see how proud they were of what they created. But what, um, when I was visiting the school though, I was there in April and walking through, you know, it was a, a spring day, uh, even for San Francisco, a nice spring day and the, um, I'm in the hallway and there's heat coming out of the radiator. So I asked the school administration, why is the heat on in the hallway? And, um, I learned that the heat comes on and they can't turn it off. And we've had our staff out there to try to figure it out and it just blasts. And what ends up happening is not only, um, in the hallway, but in the classrooms. And so I learned teachers actually will sometimes take kids out of the classroom because it's too hot to do their instruction, uh, outside. So when I say the system isn't working, it's actually impacting our students' educational experience. And you hear I go to schools and, and when I go to schools, I, I often do just drop in visits because I want to see what's it like in our schools, uh, not that anybody has to prepare for me, but what's a, you know, day in the life like in the school in San Francisco? And there were numerous times last year when I visited and I did an unannounced visit and the principal wasn't available to show me around to the school. But that's because the principal was subbing in a classroom, right? Because we either had, you know, uh, cheap positions that weren't filled or we weren't able to secure subs. And unfortunately, I see this and hear about this every day where people from principals to classroom teachers, to par educators, to custodians, like, that they don't have the working conditions they need to ensure that our students are successful. You know, for our principals, I was a principal, I know we want to be instructional leaders. We want to be in the classrooms looking at what's happening around literacy and math and making sure our kids are college and career ready. But it's, you know, it's so hard to do that now when there's so many operational and system issues that just aren't being dealt with. Um, and, you know, in the end, what I see is like, overall, we, we almost have a scarcity mindset. We're like, we feel like we just don't have what we need to effectively educate our students. And I think this is in part because we haven't been clear about our baseline commitment to schools. Like what should every school be able to expect? Um, what should our staff be able to expect in terms of support for our students? And so we're putting teachers, administrators and families in difficult situations where they have to make these really tough choices when they're on the school site council or planning how to use their, their funding. And so like I said, we have bright spots, but in terms of our system as a whole, we're really just limping along and settling. And as a parent myself, like, I don't want to feel like we're settling for our kids and we shouldn't settle for a system that is broken and one that doesn't live up to our commitment to educational equity as well, right? We shouldn't settle for a system that doesn't adequately serve our Black and Brown students, our students with disabilities, our English learners, our newcomers, really our most vulnerable student populations. And so commissioners, you know, I've shared some of what I see in the system. And so that's why I feel like we need to have this conversation and we need to have it now uh, because I don't want us to keep limping along. And, you know, I appreciate the goals we've set for student learning. It's why I've been excited to join S F U S D, it's why I got into education. You know, but having been here for a year, I know that we won't meet our goals if we continue with the status quo. So tonight, we're gonna take a hard look at facts and data that present a challenging picture of our system as a whole. And sometimes I think it would be easier almost not to have this conversation and look at the whole system, right? Maybe if we just tweaked our budget and made some reductions here or there, did something different, we, we, we could move forward, but we would really continue to be limping along and it's just not going to get us where we need to go. Um, and it also, if we didn't have this conversation, it doesn't align with our commitment to try to be more transparent with our community and really be clear about where we're going as a district. So I appreciate that you've called this workshop and recognize we need to examine the whole system and everything in it. Um, and, you know, when I say everything in it, that's from the district office and the services we're providing at our schools, how we staff our schools, the programs we have at our schools, our facilities, and even the number of schools that we have. You know, and this is hard, but we need to be upfront and put everything on the table because that's what our kids deserve. So like I said, this is gonna be a conversation tonight, uh, this is a conversation among the board, but we're gonna have many community conversations about this. But I wanted to give you all as commissioners, a chance to share. When I say the whole system isn't working, you know, what, what are one or two things that come to mind for you? And why is it important to you that we're having this conversation, um, this evening? You know, and, and, and why now? So I'll open it up to commissioners to, each have about two minutes to share. Yeah, what, you know, again, the, the, the question is, um, when I say the system isn't working as a whole, what are, what comes to mind for you? And why is it important we have this conversation now? Yeah. Yeah.
Um, thank you, Dr. Ryan, and thank you for, um, for helping facilitate this conversation. I think it's a really important one and I think that question is a really important one in terms of are, what, where are we starting from? Where are, do we share mutual concerns, um, and, and mutual agreement in terms of where we want to see the district go? I'll just say, I really appreciate you raising up the bright spots. Um, I'm seeing it with my own kiddos. I went, I was at Clarendon all day Sunday for their fiftieth anniversary of their Japanese bilingual, multicultural program and it was amazing to see the community together. I have a new middle schooler and I've heard most middle schoolers are like, man, man, and he's loving Prestige. And so I'm seeing the bright spots, I'm seeing how excited he was to meet his homeroom teacher who opened the door with, with, uh, arms wide open and saying, let me help you, show you, let me get you where you need to be. Um, so I think it's really important to acknowledge those bright spots. And I would say the three, um, in, in direct response to your question using my two minutes, um, I think that there's three concerns that I have and I, they're similar to the ones that he looked at, Dr. Lee. Um, one of them is that we are not meeting the needs and dare I say failing to meet the needs of those students, um, who've been historically marginalized by degrewned systems of oppression. Um, whether we're talking about our Sped students, our African-American students, our Latinx students, or Pacific Islander students, we are not meeting their needs and we are regularly failing them. That is a huge concern. Um, we've been doing it for many, many decades and it needs to, it needs to change. Um, the second problem that I see is that, and again, you mentioned this, is that our working environments, our staff and educators are not what they need to be. And they are learning, they are, they're teaching in the spaces where we are wanting our students to learn and they are supporting our students in the spaces we expect them to learn. And if they are not supported and feeling validated, I don't think that this system works. And then from a, the perspective of, of not only educators and students, but also from, from parents and community, there's just a, um, deep sense of mistrust. And I know that we, it is on us to earn that back. We, it's nothing that is owed to us, but we need to be doing the work to earn it back. And then that lack of trust is something that I think is, um, is, it's been a huge, uh, a big obstacle that we need to overcome.
I'll go because my, a lot of my points are gonna echo Vice President Weisman Ward's. I actually made my notes before you spoke and I made the same three points. So, so I think there's some alignment on the board here. Um, what I wrote here was, we're not serving our most vulnerable students. We're not supporting the people we work, do the work every day in our schools and there's a lack of trust. And, um, I know that because I spent, um, twenty years as a teacher and principal in the district before, and then also a parent for some time before I was on the board. And this is not a new problem, uh, and I think, it's, hello? And I want to thank, um, we, S F, our, um, teachers, you know, for producing a report yesterday that kind of outlined some of the fiscal mismanagement that's built up over the last two decades, right? And so I think, um, I really appreciate our new superintendent and my colleagues for finally having the courage to take this on. So this is a problem within S F U S D, this building for years. When I first got on the board, the first day I was on the board in twenty twenty-one, we had a hundred and twenty-five million dollar deficit. Right? And so we, we closed some of that, but, and we'd used one-time funding to stabilize our finances for the next several years. So we're not in an immediate crisis moment, but as the superintendent said, we're limping along. And so to me, this is the moment. Uh, I understand there's been a lot of conversation around, um, oh, are we gonna close schools, right? And I, and I think that's actually an indicative of the lack of trust, right? People immediately jump to the worst-case scenario. Um, that's not where, where we were starting this conversation. This conversation is really putting everything on the table. Um, I think from what I've heard from my colleagues, everyone understands how disruptive that would be, if that's, if that's where we end up having to go eventually, but that's the last item on the list. So we, when we talk about that, we really are talking about reexamining the system um, in order to address these critical, critical issues. And so, um, I'm just glad that we can end this conversation. I hope through this process, we can rebuild the trust, um, from the community, of the community.
Um, thank you very much, um, thank you, uh, Superintendent Lee for starting this up for us and, um, and my colleagues as well as our student delegates for its composition. Um, I'm also a long-time, uh, teacher as well as a principal in the district. At least in the past, I'm a pretty good teacher in the young city, um, because I'm back on the board. Uh, but, um, I can definitely speak to the long-term mistrust that folks that work in our district have for the district and we can't place that blame on any one person or any group of people. It is, it's historic, it probably goes back to, um, a strike that was in nineteen seventy-eight, um, the last, uh, did strike in the district. Um, and it is, but it has been, um, built upon because I think we have in many ways mismanaged our funds in many, many ways. Um, we have thousands of fewer students than we had years ago. Yeah, we have way more centralized staff than we did years ago. We have, um, buildings that are full of wonderful people that are centralized out. They're all to a person, wonderful people, but they're way more than we need to do the work to serve our students. When we talk about our students, we're talking about all of our students. But we think historically it failed over and over again to the same students that other commissioners have mentioned. Um, as well as we failed our staff. We lose five hundred, seven hundred credentials, uh, teachers staff a year. That's unsustainable. The leaving from the schools that serve, they historically lead those units in our city continually. Until we deal with that, until we stabilize our staffing, we're gonna have the same outcomes we've always had previous to talking about. We have to be better and we have to look at what we're studying and learn to do so.
Uh, yes, to everything everyone's already said, thank you very much. Um, I, I concur. I, I, just to add to this, I would say, coming from community engagement, I think that's a big part of our historic mistrust. We have a really, we have all the pretty words, we say all the right things. The question is, do we have the follow-through? When we engage with the community, do we do it because we want to make change and listen to the folks who are most impacted or we do it to check the compliance boxes? Um, and both have been true. Um, I think another challenge that we have is, again, using the pretty words to write resolutions and, and make policies, but not ever follow through with the budget and the resources that are needed to drive the systemic change that we want to drive. And so I'm really hopeful that this process, if we do it with fidelity, will actually get us there.
Thank you, uh, for next, and we'll go to the other side of, of the table. I, I think for me, it's really about accountability and partnership. I think just how we as a district are holding ourselves accountable to the highest standards and supporting our staff and our families, um, to excel. Um, and I think that, that, you know, it starts with us as a board, with the superintendent and really, I think, trying to be a good example and model of that, of kind of this new, um, new approach that we're trying to take to accountability and what it looks like. And then like partnership, just, I think, really making sure that when we're making decisions, there's a community process, um, that's not only involved in kind of finalizing decision, but that is, um, a part of the, the start of the process. And that really, uh, we're reaching out to our union partners, our community partners, people in our school community, uh, when we're starting our plan, just so that we can have all the experts at the table on that beginning to really utilize that and kind of harness, uh, what we want to. Um, that's a check for me. Yeah, there you go.
Yeah. So as a student, I greatly value having the opportunity to explore many of my interests, including like college, like different careers, especially since I'm a senior in high school. And I've seen the impact that passionate teachers and mentors and staff have had on me and my life. And I hope to see more attention brought to you like funding after-school programs and music programs that really allow students to express themselves. Thank you.
I think that for the students, before trust comes hope, we need the knowledge that there is a plan at all, a plan that is accessible and digestible for the student population, which is obviously largely under eighteen. So they will need something that they can see very clearly and that has words that they can understand. Because until we see some tangible plan, it's as if there isn't one at all. And when we are left planless, it's, we start to give up. And also, as we see our staff being left essentially without a life raft, without that plan, as soon as they start to give up, then we give up even more. So establishing that hope should be at the forefront, establishing a plan and establishing hope, because those are things that can be done at the same time.
My head is ringing.
Despite a lot of well-intentioned positive initiatives, they haven't added up to whole system change and they certainly haven't led to the outcomes our students deserve. Through the years, they've seen the status quo win the day over and over again. And for me, serving on this board and as a representative of the community, I can no longer stand for it, for the status quo. So four things that come to mind of how we got here and what we need to do now as a governing body and as representatives of the community. We haven't owned up to what's not working. And it's hard to look in the mirror sometimes, but our kids' education depends on it. Just last Tuesday, I think we really modeled as a board around the embodiment of continuous improvement and embodying when we know we are not meeting our student outcomes and make a commitment to not only saying the words of doing better, but how we're going to do better. And then we have to be truthful, transparent and self-critical. That lends to accountability. We haven't translated plans like Vision twenty twenty-five into actual change throughout this, the district. And, and I'm being honest that we've been quite naive about what it takes to change a whole system. And so what we must do now is place the importance on implementation and the follow-through. That is often where I see where systems, public systems can stumble. And let me be clear, I want the expectation that the superintendent to have a comprehensive plan for how change will happen and devote the necessary resources to making that happen. We also have much room to grow, to come together as a community and there's so much trust building that's already been stated that is necessary. I'm not interested in a divide at San Francisco. We know that we face that already each and every day and that people are looking to us as leaders to bring that hope and joy and bringing us together for our students and that we have to listen, being open into listening. I would say as a system, we hasn't made the tough decisions over the years. In San Francisco collectively, we're really good about talking about what we believe in, of equity and justice. about what we believe in, of equity and justice. And yet, in reality, we have fallen so short of delivering on that promise for our students and our community. And let's be honest, um, year after year, we do face so many pressures. And the easy thing is to do is to say yes to everything and everyone while not going deep and delivering on what we've are here for our students and their outcomes and the support of our staff who make this possible for our students. And so for me tonight, this is the beginning of some really critical conversations, discussions, and ultimately through this journey will be decisions. And we've talked a lot over the last year and a half, two years, that we are the change right here. There's no one, there's no cavalier. We are the changemakers um, before us. And I've gone almost over time. Thank you.
Yes, and to everything I've heard, um, I think as far as the categorically, the the two areas, the three areas that um, brought me to this seat were really looking for fiscal and operational responsibility and sustainability and clarity, transparency about how we're, wh- what money are we spending? How are we spending it? And who is and how our students are benefiting? Serving on budget committees, I saw a lot of behavior that was about we got money in, we spent the money, let's pat ourselves on the back, like the job is done. That is not the job of educating students. That is not the 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 way we're going to alleviate entrenched disparities in educational opportunities to improve outcomes for all of our students. The second, so that into student outcomes, like I firmly, firmly believe and I know because I've seen it at our school sites, just as the superintendent opened us up. We have kids who are in the seats, ready to learn. We have families that are wanting to engage. We have educators that are doing, going above and beyond. I'm the daughter of LA Unified School District Elementary School Teachers. We took just about every vacation to supplement materials for the classroom. A lot of US history in my head because of that. But um, and then the other piece is really to reestablish trust. I mean, I really think we have um, this district collectively. And I want to, you know, I want to point out, there's been a leadership change. There's been a leadership change on this board. There's been a leadership change with a new superintendent in his assembling a new team that is clear eyed and ready to do the roll up and do the work. So building on what Commissioner Lamb just mentioned, this is not about how we um, whose fault it was, who was historically, this is about like, how do we build as a district? How do we build as a city? And how do we put the unified in the San Francisco School District? Um, as a parent in the district, I've had great experiences at individual school sites, but what I don't see or I want to see more of is central office coming in in support and service of our schools. Um, our kids' learning environments, our our educators' working environments. And yes, we need to pay our educators a competitive wage, retain them in the system. The working conditions are what I hear over and over again about what needs to change. And in my, in my mind, central office is here to build capacity for our educators and also to get the bureaucracy out of the way. Our educators should not have to think about operational systems. They should not have to think about fiscal systems. They should not have to review their paychecks um, out of worry and concern. So these are all elements that need to be on the table, that there is a operational and fiscal confidence in this district. There is a plan. And that we also are, and this is what I keep waiting for as a board and as a district, to come, like to focus on the students and the curriculum and the instruction and the supports that our educators need to ensure that we carry out our role and responsibility, our mission as a district, which is to educate our kids so that they have the skills and the experiences and the connection to their aspirations and desires so that they leave ready. So that's where I'm at. And I just want to say, like, what I'm hearing when I hear from families, when I hear from our labor partners, when I hear from folks in central office, I hear alignment. I hear a lot, everyone is seeing the same things. I also, um, you know, again, we have new leadership. We have clear eyed leadership. We didn't create the problems, but we really are here to fix them. And to Commissioner um, Fisher's point, it's the building of trust. I'm not even going to call it rebuilding of trust, because I've been in the district for a decade and I just want built trust. Like, I don't know what it was before, but um, I am excited to have these conversations. I am optimistic because I feel like we have people who understand the role of the superintendent. The board does not run this district, but we do have one employee, superintendent Wayne. And with that, I'm going to hand it over to him.
Um, thank you all for sharing your your reflections and highlighting the importance of this conversation. And we clearly hear a few themes. And so I I want to almost acknowledge, we're here a theme of that that we need to take action and have a, you know, have a plan and take action and not just talk about it. But uh, but tonight we are going to do some talking and we're not coming yet with the plan, but we are coming being very clear about where we think we need to, areas where we need to make proposals to get the system working for our our students. And so if we can go to our presentation now, just to share uh, where uh, what what to expect for the rest of the evening. Um, so we had um, a conversation about, a bit of a conversation about why now. I'll speak to that um, a bit more. And you go to the next slide. Okay, um. And then as we, we do want to have um, a discussion on what is, uh, you know, what, what? Um, you know, what are some of the critical issues facing our district when we look at our resources? And make sure there's a shared understanding of that. But then I think that, you know, critical part of this evening is to talk about what are going to be the guiding principles as we develop proposals? And then we'll talk about the area, uh, the areas where we're going to develop proposals and the timeline uh, as well as the process for involving uh, the community in the proposal, in developing proposals and making uh, uh, decisions. Um, and, you know, I I shared this at the beginning, but it's worth the, if you go to the next slide. It's um, it's worth repeating, next slide. You know, we, the board uh, did do a good work last year to update our vision. Um, you know, and and adopt our values and adopt student outcome goals for us to focus on. Uh, and so you see those there around literacy, math, and college and career readiness. And recognizing we need to take a targeted universalism approach. So we have universal goals, but then the interim goals and the work we're doing is targeted to support the students who really uh, need, needed to reach those goals. If you go to the next slide. Um, back one more. One more. Yeah. Uh, and then that's guided by our um, our values. Uh, and you see the the first and most important value to me is being student centered. And and so figuring out how we demonstrate it through our actions and through our policies that we really are uh, focused on the student. So if you go to the next slide. Um, so I'm going to turn it over now for a conversation about um, some of the key drivers and and that are shaping our resource alignment. And I'm going to turn it over to our Associate Superintendent of Operations, uh, Don Coman-Locken.
Good evening, commissioners. Thank you, Superintendent. As the superintendent stated, we're having this discussion tonight because the district's operations, and in this context, what we mean by that is not just SNS and custodians, but all the decisions, the non-instructional decisions we make about how we administer and operate the district, and particularly the way we think about enrollment, staffing, our property management and budget. And that, the way that we manage those issues has huge impacts on students, families, and staff. Uh, we haven't always acknowledged that, right? Just that simple relationship has not been consistently acknowledged. And many times, we've made operational decisions in an isolated way. Uh, for example, projecting or our enrollment, creating enrollment policies without really analyzing what they mean for our financial projections down the road. Um, and that isolated decision making has yielded policies that are not only looking at cost purposes with each other, but that more frustratingly, they're undermining school site success. The the slides we're about to look at can feel a little overwhelming. Um, you've seen many of them in different conversations over the years, but we're hoping to weave them together tonight in a narrative. And it's important, I think, for us to remain optimistic and to be optimistic about what we can accomplish together as we continue to just focus on student outcomes. And decide how the district can respond to these different factors and forces and respond to the circumstances that we find ourselves in. Okay? All right, let's begin. Next slide, please. Thank you. To that end, staff have analyzed and sought to understand the way that current trends and policies are impacting the stability of the district. And we've identified ten, ten key facts or ten key drivers that we feel the district must address and reconcile in order to be stable and successful. If we can't agree on the nature of the challenge first, we will not be able to agree later on solutions. And so it's important for us tonight to look at these all together and think about how important they are and the interdependencies between these two different facts and shaping our current reality. So with that, we're going to begin, and then we're going to have some time to reflect on these together. All right, next slide, please. So first, enrollment has declined and will continue to decline. Uh, as of USD's enrollment, has dropped by over four thousand students since two thousand twelve. And our recent demographic projections as of last month are also forecasting an additional loss of about four thousand six hundred additional students by two thousand thirty two. Okay, next slide, please. Not only are we seeing declining student population, but we're also now, and we are not alone in this, but still, we are struggling to staff schools. Um, as of August twelfth, this is numbers come down as we have reopened school, but we were looking at a twenty one percent staffing shortage at that point in classroom staffing positions. And we've talked several times this year about the fact that we've had very persistent and significant staffing shortages um, for custodial services, SNS, and buildings and grounds. Next slide, please. Compensation is almost certainly part of that attraction and retention challenge. And here we're showing that we have a compensation schedule that um, when we look at a couple of different reference points in the Bay Area, starts out um, very competitive, but as um, teachers and um, certificated staff say, that competitiveness goes down over time. Um, it's important to know that like some of these districts, particularly San Mateo Union, that top line is a basic aid district. They have a really different set of revenues to use to compensate staff, but still, this is just a snapshot to show where we place um, in the region. Okay, next slide, please. And so we also have at this time, because of that declining enrollment, um, schools are not full. We wanted to really show uh, by grade how this is playing out, that while we uh, best practice is to enroll to about ninety five percent of enrollment capacity, um, we're more at ninety one percent across the district. Um, and that elementary schools were closer to ninety percent. This is after we already reduced capacity by a hundred classrooms in twenty two, twenty three. Um, and what I want, okay, thank you. Next slide, great. And so not only as we look at by grades, one of the things that I think I certainly thought before I started studying this issue that maybe under enrollment was really concentrated in specific places and that accounted for that gap. It doesn't. In fact, as you look at this chart, you see that we have under enrollment across the district, across many different school sites. And this is just elementary schools. Um, but that you can see the nature of the challenge and that just addressing our most severe outliers is not going to help us address fully the underlying challenge and issue. Um, I also want to flag that for this data for elementary schools, but also we have this chart for middle school and high school. We can show that too. That there is a difference between enrollment capacity and the physical facility capacity of many of these sites, which is a different number on top of that. Um, but it is even just for the enrollment capacity that we're administratively setting. This is the information, this is the data that we see for elementary schools. And so next slide, please. So with these enrollment patterns across the district and seeing how spread they are across the district, we end up um, not necessarily with small schools, but smallish schools, right? We're leaning just on the distribution of the curve of school sizes um, overall towards the lower end. And at the same time, school size is not a strong predictor or definitive predictor at all of student outcomes. And so we're referencing, again, these are elementary schools and we're referencing English Language Arts uh, uh, achievement standard. Okay, next slide, please. This gets more complicated for anyone who's looking for light switch solutions where you can just turn it on and off. And then quickly address the problem is that we also have, there is a mismatch between where students live and where they apply to go to school. And so on the left side of this map, you see a map that shows uh, the count of kindergarten applications where the darker colored zip codes show more intense demand. And on the right side of this slide, you see um, where our students live. And you can see that change as well, right? That we have a lot of students living on the eastern side of the city and the southeastern part of the city. And that that is um, a mismatch. And that occurs for many reasons. Um, next slide, please. But um, and that includes, there's reasons for that that include perceptions of um, performance. It includes systemic bias that's occurred. Um, residential segregation patterns and also the challenge of the fact that there is again, also a mismatch between kind of the capacity of the school sites and also where they live. So even if you wanted to automatically make a shift, one little swoop to move all children maybe back to a close, tight proximity with their neighborhood school, the capacities are not completely aligned in terms of the physical capacity at the schools, let alone the enrollment capacity. So when we think about our facility planning in particular, right? There are things that we can do, um, almost, we can achieve almost any change we want over a five or ten year period. Within a one year period, we're also quite constrained though by our footprint. And so these all have to be balanced as factors. Next slide, please. Then we layer on the facility condition assessment data, which we spent a lot of time talking about this year. And there's uh, bright spots in this data as well, that we have a range of conditions from excellent to poor. And as we showed when we were discussing the facilities master plan, um, the distribution of those poor and excellent facilities is fairly even across the city. But we do have significant investments that still need to be made to bring those sites that are in poor condition up to excellent. And as I've referenced, facility investment decisions have often made uh, been made separate and independently from other considerations around operating costs and enrollment. And then the last slide, please. Okay, so all of this adds up together um, to uh, our declining enrollment definitely impacts the district's finances. And as we think about our own forecast of our budget deficit and look at this particular chart, we're also not even including in this, again, like what we'd like to do to invest in both programs that we think would be instrumental in improving student outcomes or our own staff, right? And so that we have to think about how all of these factors combine together and what it means for us to continue to operate um, in the way that we've been operating and at the scale that we've been operating. Okay, so I want to pause there. So um, actually, if you could go to the next slide. So the question that we So the question that we need to grapple with is, what does this mean for SFUSD's future? And I'm going to ask you that question in a minute. But we wanted to surface that as we've deliberated on this question, there's kind of two takeaways that we have. One is, it is essential that we take this moment to align the way we're allocating all of these resources, because we do have many assets to think about as a district. And how to align them to create a stable, sustainable SFUSD system of schools that provides equitable access to both the basics, like the superintendent said, what is our baseline commitment to schools, as well as necessary supports. And that, lastly, our approach must be holistic. That if we continue to address any one of these levers and of, again, staffing, enrollment, property, and budget separately from the others, that we're going to continue to have disjointed outcomes and experiences. Okay, so we're going to take a deep breath. That was a lot. And we're going to move into some discussion and reflection. Before we do that, we're going to have this discussion actually in two parts. First, we're going to spend a few minutes just on clarifying questions around the data that we just shared. For some of you, it's familiar, some of it is new, some pieces, and make sure that everyone understands the data in the same way. Can have opportunities to ask those questions. We'll take about five minutes to do that. And the second is to really have a discussion, we'll do around Robin, around how do you see these trends shaping the daily experiences and playing out at school sites and impacting the daily experiences of students, families, teachers, principals, and staff? Okay, so before we we start both of those questions, that was a lot. I'm going to give you two minutes to just take a breath and think about it. Write down some thoughts for yourself, either your clarifying questions or points you want to make. And then we'll begin with clarifying questions for a few minutes.
Right now, we're going to transition. What I'm going to add that we do as we start with clarifying questions is we'll pick a spot around the table to start from, and then we'll kind of go around. Each commissioner will have two minutes, but hopefully less to ask your question. And we'll be keeping time and I'll let you know when we hit the two minutes, just so you know, we can move forward. And we're going to ask commissioners not to ask follow-up questions, but to try to stay on the theme of the original question. That one, this is just if you have a clarified question. Please start our soft mission.
Two clarifying questions. One is if you can just explain the difference between what you mean by enrollment capacity versus facility capacity. And then the other piece was just generally, if there's anything that you want to share that's specific to middle school, high school, or K through eight schools? Just because we historically spent a lot of time talking about our elementary school kids, but there's other grades.
Great. I think we should collect the questions maybe and then respond, or do you want response each? I'm happy to go one by one. Okay. Great.
Let's start one by one and we'll kind of see how it goes. And if we need to take multiple at a time for time reasons, then we'll do that, but let's start this way.
Great, thank you, Commissioner. It's a good question. When we say facility, let's start with the difference between enrollment and facility capacity, which is a great question and very relevant. Prior to the pandemic, we did not have a comprehensive list of SFUSD's spaces, school site by school site. One of the, like, the data sources that was created, okay, I'm sorry. One of the data sources that was created that was really invaluable that we needed in order to orchestrate both the emptying out of school facilities and then putting people back in was that inventory. One of the positive outcomes of the creation of that data was that then we were able to give that data set to the enrollment, I'm sorry, the Educational Placement Center, which up until then had been relying on principals and school site self-reported capacity numbers to plan the system. With that physical inventory of classroom spaces, the Educational Placement Center staff team plus with instructional partners did literally a site tour of particularly focused on elementary schools to think about, okay, which of these spaces is being used for, you know, general classroom instructional purposes, to what extent are we using them for breakout spaces? To where do we need an SDC classroom, right? To then more centrally set those capacities. That's what we call the enrollment capacity. It's an administrative decision that we have made informed by data and by reported uses of the school to say this is the number of students that this school should, that we should enroll. But there are big differences between enrollment capacity in some school sites and the potential physical facility capacity. And I think to your point, happy to get that data for you, but particularly in some high school sites, that's where we see those big differences.
So I'll just to your second question, just give as an example that came out in a high school task force is that our, some of our high schools have more capacity than students we enroll. But to maintain the current number of high schools, we then, we have students enrolled across the district, right? So so that's that's an illustration where it plays out as secondary where the facility capacity is greater than the enrollment capacity we've established.
Thanks, Commissioner Montalma. Actually, that was one of my questions about the difference. I had another clarifying question. The slides where you described the under enrollment by grade and then by school site within, I think the slide is the elementary schools. It's the sources twenty-two, twenty-three SFUSD enrollment data. And I'm wondering, do we also have historical trend data? We're going to be making very, very big decisions. And I think, I'll speak for me personally as a board member, I would want to know, I'm assuming this isn't just like a one-off, one-year, this is what it looks like. But I think it would be really useful for us to understand what the historical trends have been. If we're being asked to make significant decisions, knowing that that this is in response to something that isn't just a one-year, we had a blip in in numbers.
Thank you, Commissioner. That's a great question. We're happy to produce the historical trend data we have. I don't know that you can get deep longitudinal analysis like back fifteen years or so, but we certainly can provide you with, I think, a snapshot that shows to your point, this is not a new trend. This is not a new moment. And so we're happy to do that. And also in terms of, since we have the modern or the most recent version of the student assignment system we have, we also do have data sets around, again, family requests for placement that also I think we can give you at least a few years back of that.
I wanted to ask a clarifying question about slide fourteen, and school size does not predict student outcomes. So it looks to me like that is graph is based on proficiency, you know, like proficiency rates rather than growth. So that's a little confusing because it doesn't necessarily, it doesn't show what schools are adding to the equation. So that's one question. But I got my other question was sort of around school size. Because there actually is pretty well documented educational research that shows that smaller elementary schools tend to produce better student achievement outcomes. But those studies tended to find small as three to four hundred students. So we actually have a lot of schools that are even smaller than that. We have about thirty schools that are under three hundred. So we have what I would describe as some extremely small schools, which, you know, so I guess I'm just curious if there's more thoughts on that from the staff perspective on like, what are, when we say small, what do we mean? And when we talk about outcomes here, is that growth or is that just they get, the school enrolls a lot of high school kids coming in kindergarten and they can all read in third grade? That doesn't necessarily tell us whether the size.
Commissioner, I think that's a great question and a good observation. We are focused here on one specific dimension, right? We do not, this this chart is not to evaluate other factors such as sense of belonging. Or again, growth from pre-K to sixth grade proficiency. But really just to show that there are a set of patterns here that show it is all over the map. And to your point, as I said, I didn't use the word small, I said smallish, right? Like we have, that we have both. We have both small schools by different standards. But we also have just across the district, these, you know, smallish three hundred to four hundred that are then also not enrolled to full capacity, right? So we have compounding factors.
Just as a follow-up, it may be, you know, an answer right now, but it will lend to inquiries coming from the board members. It's one thing if it's designed to be a small school. And then, you know, how the alignment of resources staffing supports that design. I think I'm curious when we say smallish. So is it designed or is it because of a, you know, symptom of the enrollment pattern? So that's, I think, really important also to be clear as we're honing in around teaching instruction. How are things going to be different when we do resource alignment for our students and?
I want to appreciate that point. And and I understand what you're saying, Commissioner Alexander, about, you know, it's measuring one outcome and it's not necessarily measuring the growth. But I think the the point is, is we're, you know, is, yeah, some have been small schools by design, but some aren't. And so when I talked at the beginning about being clear on our baseline commitments, part of that is defining what we will provide our schools. And something that's unique about San Francisco compared to other districts is we will need to have different sized schools because some of our facilities lead to that. So we have some schools that the most they can have is two hundred seventy-five kids. And then other buildings that could have, you know, five hundred students in them. But it hasn't been intentional to say, we're going to resource these sized schools in these ways. And but but so the result has been, yeah, not not by design, and then we're not seeing the outcomes that we want to see.
I just wanted to follow from the the resource question that Commissioner Lam alluded to. These ten drivers I think are super helpful. And we've also seen some additional data like in January, we had the report from the city's budget office about some of the areas where our central office was not resourced in the ways that many other comparatively sized districts are. We're moving to a new reading curriculum this year because the previous very expensive curriculum and assessment systems we were using, they didn't have the outcomes. And so we spent a lot of money on additional intervention and additional staff members. And a lot of kids got referred to special education, which costs three times as much as general education programs. So I think when we talk about resource allocation, my clarifying question is, where are we going to bring that in this conversation?
Thank you, Commissioner. I think that's a great question. And as we go through the presentation tonight, I do think that is one of the essential questions that we have to answer and develop proposals for is to really think through that question of where's our investments, right? Where are we allocating resources and again, staying focused on student outcomes? What are we getting for it? Are there alternatives that we can be pursuing that we can feel like will either get us improved outcomes or again, allow us to just run things in a more predictable and scalable fashion? So that is one of the the questions that we will be tackling this year.
On slide fourteen, it says the phrase school size does not, school size does not predict student outcomes. And the data that's showing is only from elementary schools. Have that data for middle schools and high schools just because from a student perspective, that statement without the data to back it up for also middle schools and high schools just feels dismissive in a sense that it likely not intentional. But unless we see that data, we're, it's easy to assume that it is just an attempt to dismiss.
Um, thank you. I think we've gotten the feedback from several commissioners about the focus on elementary schools in the presentation. Part of that is because we have a student assignment policy, which really is focused on elementary schools and attendance areas. And so that's part of what we're trying to unpack, but we do have this data and we can certainly share it, I think, to create the side-by-side of elementary school, middle school, and high school.
Think at this point, maybe we will end the clarifying questions from commissioners and we'll come back around with the next round of discussion. And just to let the public know, I don't think we talked about when public comment was going to happen. But we're going to have public comment occur after the district has presented the majority of the the presentation, just so that. Uh, after the, let me actually give you.
If you don't want to be inclusive and you don't want to hear from the community, you all could have done this at a schedule.
Going to ask the public to not comment now while we're having our media. Or else we're going to have to recess the media and ask folks to leave. We are going to plan to have public comment based on our agenda around. We are not going to have a discussion about this right now. The public comment will occur around eight forty-five.
Because you don't want to hear from us. That's what you don't want to do.
We, we are not discussing this at this moment. We are going to continue with the board presentation from staff and questions from. Delegates to respond to.
Thank you. Thanks, Commissioner, for those clarifying questions. And we will be following up with additional data. Particularly want to acknowledge the request for comparables for middle school and high school. So our next question is to ask the the board to consider, how do you see these trends shaping the the daily experience of students, families, and staff right now in the district and 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 the future? All right. Commissioner, about just however you want to line up the speaker order.
I'll get started and we'll recall soon that we can start, so let me on a second. I think the big part for me is seeing the trends and kind of understanding that we have to do work to 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 change the trend, especially regarding our enrollment. Like we really have to build trust and confidence in our district so that students and families want to go here and aren't opting out. I think it's going to be really important for us in these early phases to really define what we mean. We use some of the terms that were kind of presented in the presentation. What is equitable access to the basic and necessary supports really means? And how does that compare to what we're offering right now? And really like what are the expectations that folks can can expect? Because we've been making a promise, I think, to do that for a while. And if we're saying we're going to do something different, it will be important for us to kind of identify what that difference is. And also I think there's more clarity about how we're going to handle the variety of things that we need to to deal with and address in a short period of time. And just how we're going to actually fulfill and implement the things that we're probably be constantly committed to.
Well, I think we've talked a lot about trust and transparency.
Well, I think we've talked a lot about trust and transparency, right? Historically, we have two meetings a year or two meetings a month, apologies. Um, this month already, our first month of the school year, this is our third meeting, two of them workshops, which is outside of the normal format. But um I hope what this means is as far as these trends. That we're going, this is the pattern of breaking those trends with more transparency. And providing as much information as possible to the community. So that when they do, as we say in the special education uh realm, um families have the right to informed consent. You should have all the information in front of you before we expect you to comment, before we expect you to participate. And um hopefully this is um an example of us putting the words into action and breaking the trends and being thoughtful in how we move forward transparently.
So the question was, how is this impacting daily experience in schools? So I think the, the big one for me is number two, SFUSD is struggling to staff classrooms. Everything else depends on that. We can't talk about, you know, improving student outcomes. If we don't have the same teachers from year to year and if twenty percent of our classrooms don't have a teacher, which was actually the case at the beginning of the school year this year. So it doesn't matter. We can adopt a new curriculum. We can have all kind of training or whatever. But if their teachers aren't there and they don't stay from year to year, it doesn't matter. And so that is the, it's like building a house without a foundation. Um and for me, we have to address that as the baseline. Ensure that we're compensating our educators and treating them well, which means paying them, which means having a payroll system and H R system that works. Which means having central office, culture of sport for staff, all those things I think that we've talked about. So I think that one is, is really critical. I think the other one I just wanted to mention that I've seen an impact particularly on schools serving more low income kids. Is, and this isn't really called out maybe as clear as it could be, but the mismatch between where students live and where they go to school and under enrollment. We have a, what we call a choice-based enrollment system. But many, many families, dare I say the majority, don't experience it as choice. They experience it as stress and anxiety and all kinds of other things. But what we say is, oh, families are demanding these schools or families want these schools. And what, what really is happening is certain schools are getting lots of requests, other schools aren't getting very many requests. The schools serving low income kids, more black and brown students are getting fewer requests. Then their enrollment goes down, then their but then they lose staff, then they can't make their programs. And so we allow enrollment to fluctuate based on factors that ha- end up having uh impact on students and families. So I, I just think the enrollment process has to be a part of this conversation. And I know that thinking about it, but I just think it ought to be highlighted in here as one of the levers. If we don't, if we're not considering how does enrollment work, elementary, middle, high school. Um, it's, it's hard to then stabilize enrollment, stay budgets and ensure that we have fully staffed schools and classrooms.
Um, thank you. Pretty much what I was gonna say, I will definitely um second those thoughts, Commissioner Alexander. Um, definitely the slide fifteen about the mismatch that Commissioner Alexander was referencing is, to me, one of the most important aspects that we have to look at. We have a free market system assess essentially for our K fives and K eight schools. Um, it pits school against school. Um, it's a competition-based system that is based on a lot of assumptions about our schools that was brought up in the presentation. Um, and frankly, frankly, a lot of racialized um assumptions. And we have to contend with that. And, you know, it's worth noting that the school district has a policy to move to a zone system for our elementary schools. That has basically been pushed to the back burner. Um, and so, you know, we have a, a crowded audience today mostly because I think there's a lot of anxiety about the board wanting or needing to close schools in the future. It's and that's been telegraphed in so many different ways over the last year that we're gonna have to um confront that reality. But if we don't actually adopt and, and operationalize our own policies around zones. And then we go to closures, I just can't live with that. We have to be able to, we all, we have to be able to have a system that is more rational than what we have right now. That drives people out of their own communities to find a better school that i- in, in essence is competing for very limited spaces. And so if we don't deal with that and then we leapfrog to a conversation about closing schools, I think we're operationalizing it in the wrong order. We have to be able to do something different for our enrollment system so that we can avoid closing or merging um schools. Which is the last thing we want to do.
Thanks. And I, um, the question in terms of how this is landing and, and impact on schools. I would, you know, triple a- agreement in terms of Commissioner Alexander's point about if we don't have educators and staff in our school sites that want to be there, feel safe there, feel supported there, feel validated there, then, then we're, we're, we can't really have a conversation about how we're also supporting our students. I think the other thing that, that this presentation um says to me is, is the student experience looks really different and not in a good way. Um, and not in an intentional way. Not every student needs to have the same exact experience. That's not what, what equity is about. Um, but it needs to be thoughtful, it needs it to be intentional. So when some school sites offer some programs, extracurriculars, after school, music, sports, and others don't. That has a real meaningful impact on the student experience. And so what we're seeing here with how the, the schools are, are, are not aligned and our resources are not aligned to student experience and student outcomes. Is that folks are, are, are not given the same opportunities to engage in, in ways that, that I think they should.
There's a lot of layers to this question that, and I appreciate everything that's been said before me. I mean, one of the follow-up questions I had when we were talking earlier is how capacity maps to demand. And, you know, I've been poring over waitlist numbers and application numbers for our schools. And a lot of that does map to access to programs. And I'm, I'm particularly, I, I have to say, I'm particularly focused on middle schools and high schools. Our kids who are si- even in K through eight, when six and through, sixth through eighth grade. Because that's where, really, that's where kids start having the opportunity to self-identify and differentiate their interests and invest their time, whether it's through athletics or arts, extracurriculars, et cetera. And one of the concerns that I have seen is, you know, the way we move kids around. It prohibits them to participate in extracurriculars. It per- it prohibits them to participate in any tutoring that might be happening after school or um athletics. So there's a lot of inequities that are um the fallout of the intention to root out inequity. And so when I look at the resource planning, I, I want to understand, and this is as a parent, it's so difficult. I mean, this is true throughout the hu- the whole system, to understand what is available for after school for you, when you have little ones, before care, when you have little ones. What um, and then what is available, like what are the pathways? And I guess like what? It's the lack of transparency around what is offered. The default that we are talking about as if it's family choice. When I can see looking at the numbers, the throttling of demand to schools. Um, and I know how hard it is to get data out. I mean, I'm just gonna, this is like Public Education Enrichment Fund. We are hitting the twenty-year mark of sixty to eighty million dollars coming into this district every year. Half of that earmarked for arts, music and athletics. And library, yes. And I think we've done a great job of libraries. Like I think we've done a great job with libraries for, compared, especially comparative. But considering the amount of money and the largest amount goes to arts and music, the mapping, you can't find it. You can't, there's, there's not coherency around what a family can expect at any school, at any grade, and then how it maps to any aspirations. And then, and it is even worse so for athletics. And I just raise this up is the way we have designed has created an opaqueness. I mean, we have ten high schools that are less than six hundred kids, which means that you, there's just less that you can do unless you have access to. And perhaps like if they're, if they're thoughtfully designed, then that makes perfect sense. If they're trying to be comprehensive, it's a different thing. And so I've just been, like, it's a soup in my head, but these are the things that kind of keep me up at night, especially since I don't see the district talking about our middle school and high school kids nearly enough. And, and the enrollment system for our high schools is difficult to navigate.
I want to just further agree with what my colleagues have raised. Time and time again, every school site visit I go to, talking with educators, talking with uh administrators and staff is the fact that we are unable and struggling around um staffing. That administrators and and our educators in one given day are juggling absences of a dozen um staff members. And that puts tremendous and undue burden on our staff. And those working conditions are unsustainable. And then to think that that will translate to, or what is happening in classrooms or observations to support in the coaching that we absolutely need um to be providing our educators is absent. And that is again a clear indication to me around the failure of the system right now. And I'm particularly also interested in looking at, not only is it the compensation, but particularly around incentives. So that our educators want to stay in the profession. Right now, we're just burning them out. Um, and we've talked about this before, that we're seeing the schools that require this most stabilization of staff and educators and experience educators over time is that there is a constant um exit and transition of our staff there. Um, another aspect around what we haven't talked about is even in our conversations around guardrails is around student enrollment. And the drive to really, how are we looking to increase enrollment? I think similarly to a thread here is there's been acceptance of just limping along. Um, and, and the second piece around what do I hear and what do I talk directly with families most about is how difficult it is to navigate the overall system. And that's what the superintendent opened up with our student enrollment policies. Um, and I would also extend that beyond elementary, that it is secondary. Yes, we've seen some of the numbers that it's flat, but to me um, that is actually not a good indicator that we're performing um at a level. We should be as far as being responsive to families and students about what is it that they need in their educational journey with S F Unified.
I think what I personally struggle with is that a lot of these problems feel paradoxical in the sense that they just feed into each other and cause a constant cycle of both of those problems existing. For example, the fact that enrollment has declined and will continue to decline is directly fed by the fact that many school sites are in poor condition. And then that the fact that the district's finances are impacted by declining enrollment means that schools ca- that we can't afford to fix those poor-conditioned schools. And then if current school site capacity is not aligned with where students live, how are parents expected? Or how are we even going to get kids into the schools that they live the nearest to? So it's this sense of, we need to do something that isn't natural to human beings and multitask. And be able to delegate properly so that we can start fixing multiple problems at once. And as challenging as it would be, it would be the, it would be the clearest path to success. And also, I think it would be specifically with the educators, with schools being understaffed. Means that the stress of those educators will be put onto the students. In the sense that educators will either leave, educators and all staff members end up leaving students underserved. Because they are not given the resources to serve those students. And then that makes the students further lose faith in their education, which makes the staff's condition worse. Because they're attempting to serve people who don't believe they will be served and that they can be served by the system. And I think it's kind of endless paradoxes, which is what causes us to talk so much. But we're definitely taking a large step towards fixing them by laying them out, all out in front of us and seeing how paradoxical they truly are.
One of the inequities that I see within the data is um within the mismatch between where students live and where they apply. So one thing that really stands out to me is commute and transportation. So if a student goes to a school across the city, it is a safety hazard in many ways. And we definitely have to recognize that, and especially with concerns around closing schools. Um, especially within like elementary, middle school students. It is especially dangerous for someone who's like under the age of twelve to be commuting on their own. So we definitely have to recognize those things. And then also um staffing shortages, it impacts class sizes, which I have recognized and many of my classmates have also recognized. Um, it also just leaves less opportunities for students to get like resources and support that they need in the classroom. So, yeah, those are some things I stand for.
Um, I thank you and, and definitely hearing um some key themes that, that we need to address as we're developing uh proposals and, you know, staffing coming out very strong. So, you know, those need to show how we're addressing uh those concerns, like concrete actions that we think will lead to uh both um increasing staffing or eliminating any, any staffing shortages while also improving the working conditions. Also here that our proposals need to address our, you know, choice system that is not really uh, the way I heard it from you talking like is not really another paradox. It's a choice system that's not making our community feel like there's real choices that they can have confidence in. Um, and then third, is having transparency and clarity across schools, across the district about what resources, what you can expect when you're signing up to be in S F U S D. Um, so we have one more section for discussion and then we'll close with our, our next steps. Uh, so as we, um, I'm gonna talk about the, the need to make proposals in the area of um, you know, staffing, the services we provide to schools, the um, you know, our budget um and our facilities. And so I want to make sure we're clear on some guiding principles as we move forward with these proposals. Okay, and if you go, uh, is it twenty-two? Yeah. So if you go to slide twenty, uh twenty-two, the board has a- already expressed some of those guiding principles through the guardrails we have. So when we adopted our values, um, the process we've been going, going through as the board adopt vision and values as well as goals for student outcomes, which I highlighted in the previous section. And then guardrails, meaning this is what, um, as we're trying to reach our goals, how we're going to up uh honor our guardrails. And, and the guardrails try to operationalize that. And so if you go to the next slide, so one thing is already clear. Because you set a guardrail around effective decision-making and that the superintendent will not make major decisions without utilizing a process that includes meaningful consultation with the parents, students and staff who will be impacted by those decisions. And doing that from the beginning to when we adopt and then we, as well as when we review them. So the board adopted this last year. We've been developing some tools to support meaningful community engagement. And want to talk about what it looks like because um that hasn't always been clear here. As Commissioner Fisher is talking about like, what, what should we, what should the community expect? And so when we're talking about making major decisions, not every decision is a major decision. Last year, we worked on identifying what are the major decisions we're going to talk about. And um we did talk about staffing and uh facilities and uh, you know, addressing our resources as a major decision. So if you go to the next slide. Um, so we're gonna have a few areas where we, where we talk about. And for each of those areas, we're looking to have a lead committee that represents various constituents to work on the recommendations with staff about the decisions. And this could be, we're calling it a district advisory committee. And um that group will, is really more towards the end of the process at, rather than the beginning. At the beginning, we want to be out in community engaging and have direct engagement with our labor partners and particularly like. At the beginning, we want to be out in community engaging and have direct engagement with our labor partners and particularly like if we're talking about staffing issues, they they might be subject to bargaining. Engagement with our schools through school site council, school teams, other forums, and then have broader opportunities for families and staff to to engage like through surveys or town halls. And then also, you know, depending on different issues that we're talking about, making sure we're connecting with our constituents who are related to that that decision. So like if we're talking about you know, our facilities in the district, talking with the city of San Francisco. And that we would provide those opportunities so people are very clear on the points, the points, different points of entry to provide that feedback. If you go to the next slide. So as we, so those, that's set. You've already established that guiding principle. We don't really need to, we don't need to talk about that guardrail. You're welcome to give feedback about, you know, what that that looks like. But we're talking about some specific issues here. And so we wanted to highlight what we think need to be some guiding principles that we're recommending and looking for you to support these and revise or add as needed. And so first, kind of, if we're going to address the issue of when we're talking about this choice and alignment of resources, one principle we think is that money should follow the students and that schools have predictable services that all students receive based on student enrollment. Right? So there are going to be areas where we need to differentiate, but as a baseline, it shouldn't matter across the city, what school you go to, we should be clear on like, you know, what the baseline allocation is for classroom staffing, for the kind of, you know, for administration, for custodial staff or like that that I think that that is understood for everybody across the district and that you know, the number that the students who we have that were resourcing the school appropriately based on the students who are there. And then that we, another principle is that we'll plan to operate at scale based on student enrollment. So wanting our classrooms to be at full capacity, we've talked about how you know, how our staffing and in previous conversation, we talked about how, you know, our staffing isn't aligned with our student enrollment. So really making sure that those pieces are clearly connected. And then make sure we're allocating resources, looking at our programs that are aligned with positive outcomes for student for students. Commissioner Matomadi has spoken to the fact that there's more of an emphasis to be implemented versus did we get the the outcome that we wanted? And then lastly, but I think most importantly, that any proposals resources and specifically when we're talking about our school portfolio that we're taking an equity lens and evaluating explicitly evaluating any disproportionate racial impacts and wanting to be consistent with state statute and best practices, but understanding the, you know, frankly, the long history of racial segregation in San Francisco and not wanting to continue to replicate that, wanting to disrupt that. So we offer these as recommendations and just again, want to have an open discussion, a recommended guiding principles. Want to have an open discussion about these principles. Do they align with where we believe we need to go when making proposals? Or and again, what needs to be modified? And then we'll end with our next steps and then next steps for this process.
I think overall we had talked about being open and being on the table. I think another aspect of guiding principle that I want to be explicit about is the clear fiscal operations and systems that need to be in place so that it is in sort of in service of our school site and that clarity around so that we are maximizing revenues opera, really optimizing our understanding of potential resources that otherwise we are have not fully executed and managed.
Thank you. I just wanted to address the a couple of things related to equity. So our guardrail on resource allocation says the superintendent will line resource allocation with transparent communication, which this is just great, about how the allocations are baseline sufficient to operate all schools, which this addressed, while addressing inequitable inputs and creating more equity and excellence in student outcomes. So I just want to make sure that that is underlying all of these, which I think it is or it's implied, but like in the first one, for example, to me, it feels like student schools have predictable services that all students receive based on student enrollment and student needs or something. I mean, there, I'm not, I'm not advocating for MTSS, but there should be some sort of equity based funding strategy, right? Recognizing the students come with different needs. And similarly, in the last one, it's not just the, I think you actually said this, Superintendent, when you said it, it's not just portfolio changes, but really any changes that we make should be viewed through an equity lens, at least that's what our guardrail around resource allocation asks for. And I I know that's the intention, but I just think it's helpful, especially given, again, as you mentioned, the history of racial segregation exclusion. The last round of school closures in San Francisco in Commissioner Sanchez was talking about back twenty seven years ago, really had negative disproportionate impacts on low and communities, communities of color. I don't think there's any interest in the board or the leadership in repeating that. But I think we need to be very intentional about saying it over and over again. And every time we talk about this topic, because again, if we're talking about rebuilding trust, we need to be very clear about what's happened in the past and how we're going to do things differently.
One thing I would like to add here, I think part of our process, as much as we need to, we we need to talk about strategic abandonment. We've heard that, but I think in order to improve student outcomes and meet our students where they're where they are, we also have a lot of programs that we need to build or or that we need to increase. So as much as we need to talk about moving away from some things that we talked about a virtual academy last year, right? I mean, there's, there's a lot of students that would benefit from us taking the lessons learned from the pandemic and maybe building some really amazing programs out of them or taking some small bright spots in our district and expanding them to 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 take that same level of success and scale it. So I think there's a lot of opportunities and and make sure we're remaining thoughtful and always.
Thank you. I appreciate the guiding principles. And in terms of feedback, on the last one, I don't think it goes far enough. We'll approach the development of any proposed school portfolio changes with an equity lens to explicitly evaluate. Okay, we can approach and we can evaluate. And then what? I mean, this sort of leads over and you evaluate and be like, oh, we evaluated, but we're still going to. So I feel like this needs to be more robust in our commitment to making sure that we will reject any proposed decisions that will have a disproportionate negative racial equity impact. And I say, I would, I would encourage us to much more, be much more explicit in what this last quarter. I mean, because I think when folks hear us say the nice words, these are nice words and they're not actually committed to doing anything. Or not doing anything.
I think a lot of my questions are really probably in the next section because all of this does sound good. And so the question is to me is what, 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 what can we expect to see along the way? And then as a, I mean, asking for a community for sure, but also as board members to see as Commissioner Lam was saying, the operational impacts, the operational needs, the operational gaps required to achieve what we're trying to accomplish. Because I appreciated the student delegates earlier comments about this. There's a lot going on at once. And it is a bit, we do talk a lot, but so now this is to me kind of a handoff from the board of going through a process of setting goals and guardrails. Not being the day to day operators of the district. The superintendent and staff having that role. This is, it's not handoff is too strong. I mean, there's a partnership, but this is, this is the implementation element. And this is the role of staff. But how can we as board members and community members? What, what should we be expecting? And if that's fine to talk about in the next segment, that's completely, but this is how I react to these.
I think when it comes to racial equity in schools, a large part of where we need to start is making sure our day to day staff and educators and administrators are practicing racial equity in a sense that there should be more within these guiding principles about how to ensure that because when you add, when you add on more staff, it needs to be intentional with which staff you're adding on. Because going to three schools in the district, the school that was majority minority had the most security guards. And legitimately, we've added on staff. But when we just propose to add on staff, then that is the staff that gets added on, for example, or where you're notice, we're noticing class size within the school year that some classes have fifteen kids while others have forty and the ones that have forty are the core classes, the graduation requirements. So we need staff to fill those slots. So making sure that we not only look at it with an equity lens, but with a lens of intentionality relating to context.
Yeah, I think for me, just wanting to see more specificity as far as like how these guiding principles will impact outcomes for students, knowing we have the goals as our marker, but really how these things are going to lead to a change of experience, I mean, feelings at the actual school sites and and how it will make things better for each individual student and really having you know, a little bit more of an understanding of what it means when money will follow the student and bubble out and they blessed to do more than we're currently doing now.
Okay, again, very, very helpful. And you know, hearing the feedback on the first bullet point about, you know, making sure that the students have the services, the that the baseline services, but also how we're differentiating for student need and then doing it in an intentional way that is supportive of the students and you know, addressing the root causes. I think what you're you're saying, LaLanne, LaLanne is that it's addressing a symptom, not the root cause of what would create a meaningful learning experience for students. And then you know, hearing about being more, you know, explicit and clear in the final bullet point about what that means in terms of our actions. So we'll work on revising these. Again, it's not necessarily for, you know, you've adopted the guardrails. We felt like specific for this conversation. It was important to it was important to make sure that we, you know, are clear on how we're going to proceed with this work. But now to Commissioner Matomadi's point, how are we going to proceed with this work? So let's talk about that. This will be the final section of this part of the of the workshop.
Great. Thank you, Superintendent. And Commissioners, I apologize for clarity. We're going to try and resequence some of these slides as we were reflecting on what would make the most sense to talk through with them. So I I just want to start off as we talk about now that we've had the chance to discuss these key drivers of our current circumstances and and get your feedback on the guiding principles, we need to talk about what comes next. And so if we could actually, the the last slide in this portion of the workshop, which is slide thirty one and talks about five proposals, next one. Great. Thank you. So these are five proposals that we're going to work on. And we're going to work on these proposals, of course, guided by the superintendent and with feedback from the public to develop and workshop those proposals with the intention of providing then these five distinct proposals to the Board of Education for consideration. And if you go back, yeah, please, yes.
Okay, this is just at the end, at the, at the end. Yeah. So it makes sense to say, so when we talk about what proposals are we are we putting out there? So we're looking at five different areas, right? Around school staffing, our district wide services, like, you know, what centrally are we sending, you know, we doing to support schools? Looking at our properties, looking at our, the programs. And then again, looking at the the number of schools we have and if we have the appropriate number of schools. And then we had talked about having an advisory committee to help as we and I shared the process we'd go through to help with these recommendations. I do want to share. So this is where you know, I appreciate Commissioner Matomadi and a couple of several commissioners asked, this was originally talked about as board taking action to support these. And we originally, staff had originally done that because we wanted to be clear that this is the direction we're we're going. But the board's been doing a lot of work about what's the role of the superintendent versus the role of the Board of Education and in that governance work to develop proposals, I actually don't need your authorization. In fact, you did it through action in June when you adopted a board resolution that says we need to be fiscally stable. But these actions, what we wanted to be clear about is these actions, these proposals will result in in recommendations that eventually the board will need to approve. So let's take, for example, the idea of using property. Staff doesn't have the authority to develop, to use, to say, you know, we're going to sell a property. That's actually, the board would have to prove that. And to do that, you need an advisory committee, call it a seven eleven committee, if you're going to dispose or dispense of any property. And so the board, if we're going to go in that direction, the board will need to approve having an advisory committee for that that use. But tonight, really for to go forward and just develop one, it's not going to do that or to develop proposals in any of these areas, we didn't need action. Now, I know when we change something we're going to do and all of our talk about building trust or rebuilding trust, we need to be very clear about why we're doing that and communicate that. So I'm trying to clarify why we're doing that and understanding and and appreciating the discussion that we've had about our different roles. And we'll be clear in moving forward, you know, what's under our purview as staff versus what's under the board's purview. But that's why, but these proposals is what you should be expecting to see. And I'll turn it back over to Dawn to talk about the the committee that will help us look at this as well as the timeline for these proposals.
Thank you, Superintendent. As the superintendent noted, given the scope of work that we're outlining in terms of these proposals, specifically around real estate and property and also the the size of SFUSD's portfolio and schools. Both the law requires and best practice recommends the creation of a district advisory committee. It's important, I think, that we want to emphasize that the district advisory committee is a baseline. It is a minimum requirement for stakeholder engagement, but that we intend to pursue the guardrail number one outreach process that the superintendent described earlier. And in keeping with that outreach process, the DAC will function as the lead committee for this effort. Per state law, the DAC has to include representatives from at least each of these groups. And then you also have flexibility as needed to to round that out based on the specific district and the needs and constituencies represented in that district. So to convene that district advisory committee, the district would take the following steps. The board would approve a resolution to establish the district advisory committee. And then the district would run an application and nomination process with then selection of members. Okay. Oops. Sorry, can I go back? So, all right, go ahead. Okay. So what is the specific roadmap for the year ahead look like? There's a couple of specific goals we have here as we're showing in this timeline. I think the first is we want to complete our work, engaging stakeholders as we develop the proposals for the board's consideration by the end of the academic year. Second, we are also mindful of budget deadlines and we're trying to pace ourselves so that those proposals, which are appropriate and ready for implementation in the twenty four, twenty five school year and could benefit our financial position are submitted to the board early enough with time to act so that they can be incorporated into the budget. So for example, the central staffing model, we anticipate bringing a proposal to the Board of Ed in December for review and action. And our third goal is to frequently communicate with both the Board of Education and the public and to create a transparent, easily accessible public record of our activities and deliberation. And so that's going to include monthly superintendent updates to the And so that's going to include monthly Superintendent updates to the Board of Ed as part of the Superintendent standing agenda item. That we will also continue to offer, uh, briefings to the Board of Education as part of your standing item. With the meetings with the Superintendent. And we will have at least monthly meetings of the district advisory. Committee, which will be both public and Brown Act compliant. And we'll be sharing routine updates after each one of before and after the district advisory committee meetings. Where we'll be able to share what activities and decisions will be discussed through normal district channels like the family announcement bulletin. And also having a dedicated portion of the website, um, so that folks can stay up to date. Um, this is in addition to, again, the, the steps that the Superintendent outlined, of course. Direct interaction and outreach to school sites, um, community and labor partners and other stakeholders as needed. So this is an ambitious cadence for the year. Um, but it is really our, again, I want to emphasize that the district advisor committee is the baseline, right, minimum. And that we really expect as we bring, uh, content to the district advisory committee for their feedback. That we will, each time we develop one of these proposals, collect feedback from all of our relevant stakeholders. And so that what we're showing the district advisory committee is not just staff's proposal and the policy content. But also the feedback that we've collected from SFUSD stakeholders, so that they can also respond to both of those side by side. All right, Superintendent, do you have?
Yeah, no, so, um, yeah, so again, what we're similar to the guiding principles. Um, we're, we're sharing these so you can anticipate what's coming forward and, you know, and being. Uh, transparent and clear, like, you should expect to see proposals around these in the coming months. You know, looking at, um, some staffing for, uh, proposals to be able to do our planning for twenty four, twenty five. So we didn't, we, uh, don't want there to be surprises around that. And so this is your opportunity to say, you know, wait a second, where, you know. Why you, why would you consider a proposal in this area? Why would you consider that? And I will say, they are in an intentional order and heard that very clearly tonight when talking to the board. We want to make sure we're looking at, you know, the central office, school sites, uh, you know, use of resources. Um, our properties, uh, all of these areas, our programs before. Uh, we, we had the conversation about the number of schools that we have. And so there's an intentional order to this that we would go through. Like we said, we don't want to, we, we, part of the, the purpose tonight was to say though, we want to, we feel like we're going to need to look at everything. To be able to create the functioning system that everybody wants. So, it's your chance for any feedback, questions or comments on this and, um, then we'll be concluded with part one.
All right, um, thank you for that. Um, I, a lot of the communication, I think the board has received as well as probably staff is around the D A C itself. And the connection, potential connection between creating this body and eventual closures or mergers of schools. Is there any comments you'd like to make about that? Because I, uh, you did say that the board doesn't have to authorize whether we adopt a D A C. It's going to happen? Or?
Yeah, so there's. Yeah, so there's two, there's two reasons, um, there's multiple reasons we want to have a D A C. So one is, when we talk about the, if you go back to the slide, I, uh, the slide where what you can expect from the community stakeholders, right? When we go to different community groups, they have their perspectives that they're bringing to the table. We want to have a place where those different perspectives can come to the table. And so that's why you could see, so like, we'll meet, say, with labor partners. Or with CBO partners, but then there's a perspective that. And then, and then there's a perspective, uh, the cross-sectional perspective. The other thing is, we are being, um, you know, intentional about the fact that some of the proposals will be around property. And so if you need to do anything with property, you need to have a district advisory committee. Uh, and then it's not, if you go to school closures, it's not required for a district, that's not required for a district, um. Advisory committee is considered, you know, best practice to have it, but really a district advisory committee in that legal sense is around, um, use of property. So if we form a district advisory committee that the board doesn't approve, we can still vet and look at recommendations, but we can't. Uh, uh, the board won't be able to act on any recommendations around property without at first going to a district advisory committee.
Yeah, so I have a clarifying question here based on something you said earlier. In order to sell property, it requires a seven eleven committee.
Correct.
Right, so. If we authorize this D A C, is that a seven eleven committee?
So the way, the way it would be structured would be then to be in compliance with, with being a seven eleven committee, yes.
Okay, that's.
And then if you don't, that's what I'm saying, I would be able, I could still have a district advisory committee. But eventually, if we make recommendations around property, we, that would need to be in place.
You know, I, um, so our job in this vision value schools and guardrails process is to reflect the values of the community. That's our job as a school board. Um, and I say, in my experience as being an advisory committee member. Um, there have been a lot of different district groups that have come to us as a parent advisory committee. For the sole purpose of checking the box of having talked to stakeholders and not ever actually implemented any of our feedback. And so when we talk about this district advisory committee, and I know that the, this. Spenkac, the LCAP task force, the Harvard flow reflect committee, the many of them that I've got on. Um, uh, you know, there's been similar iterations. We've seen some great things happen due to our feedback too, so, but there is a healthy level of skepticism. That this advisory committee, and I think rightfully so. That this advisory committee wouldn't be any different and that we're actually intending to take community feedback into account here. And we're not just using this to ram a process through. Um, we still haven't, we still haven't reconstituted our parent advisory council. We've, many families are screaming for the QT path. We have, we don't have an office of family voice. We have nothing to demonstrate that we actually, the only way families can come reliably to get, come into the board is to show up here. And we've been saying for a year and a half, and we've been saying for. We've been saying that we want to fix that and we want to change that, and yet no action has happened. So. Why should our community believe us this time? That's, I think that's where, that's the tension I'm feeling here.
Just want to ask folks to respect the commissioners as we're speaking, please, we'll get the public comment. We're going to go to the student delegate next.
Um, we just want to put it out there that we do have a student advisory council. So if any students in the school district want to get involved, especially high school students, they can put in their input into the school district. Um, where we discuss a lot of issues. And, um, I also have a clarifying question. Are students going to be involved within this district advisory committee?
Yeah, so that, um, yeah, so we definitely want student voice in the process. And I think that we would want to consider, do we, do, yeah, do we want, um. Student voice on the district advisory, uh, committee? And, um, yeah, so I think that's something that, that definitely we could figure out how to incorporate. And so if, again, when we're talking about, there's two things for district advisory committee in general, definitely, you know, I could have student voice and have that. If we're talking about being in compliance with, you know, state guidelines, that's, it's not a part of that, but we would still want to incorporate it. Just want to ask the public to please keep down the comments, uh, while the board is in discussion. Thank you.
Also, the student advisory council is not awarded the same privileges as, as this district advisory council would be. And I think if you want to stay student centered, then you have to be willing to give the students a similar audience. That even this group of people is getting because all the people listed are adults. And you have to acknowledge that the people being most directly affected by these decisions are almost always the students. And they have so much that they would love to say. But we just don't feel that we would get that same audience and we would love to have anything that you could offer us. From the privileges that this D A C would be offered for the SAC to have in parallel.
Superintendent. Um, so Commissioners, I, I do want to talk about the fact that, um. The purpose of the district advisory committee with respect to property is not just for sale. It is anything you want to do. So long-term ground leases for educator housing. Which in our facilities master plan, which we discussed and adopted this year. That put educator housing as a priority, we wanted to accelerate. Meaning we wanted to meet our policy objectives within three years. And I have a very strong sense of the clock ticking from that adoption. Right now, if we want to move forward on that goal, we still are going to need a body like this. To be able to evaluate our choices and provide to talk about the facts that need to be gathered, the data we need to look at. And to give a recommendation, um, or at very least clear feedback to the Board of Ed. On how we should proceed. Right now, we have a list of surplus properties. That is very outdated, and if you saw it, you would be confused. Because many of those properties, since the surpressing process, we have now actually put back into use for school site instruction, right? So when we look at the types of opportunities that we have. With not just, um, sites that we have identified as underutilized from an administrative perspective. Right, but that are, again, administrative, that have, um, other non-school uses on them. We do need to look at that question again in public and meet the requirements of. A seven eleven committee to be able to move forward in a timely fashion with any proposal we have around the long-term use of our property. So I just want to share that as an intention and framing here, that as we respond to the facilities master plan. As we respond to feedback, we are hearing directly from the community right now about a desire to look at our property. And think about ways that we can leverage value overall. And when I say value. Um, revenue is actually one piece of that, but think about the ways that we can use our property to more effectively accomplish our overall vision. We do need to have a body like this. So I just want to frame that for folks as something that we haven't really surfaced much today. That there are multiple threads conver- converging, right, this coming year. Um, all of which are related, but that if we weren't to create this kind of body that's compliant with that state law. We'd be effectively pushing out a whole set of decisions, like at least another year. Right, so that's something for us to think about.
And I just want to clarify, because I hear the reasonable mistrust and concern, uh, from the public. And we've gotten communications about this too. All decisions, no ma- that, that even a committee like that would be advisory in nature. To the extent that all those decisions would then come back to the board for a vote, right? And we would be the ones accountable for that. And there would be opportunities for public engagement, public comment, multiple meetings. All that stuff. I just want to be clear that it's, because I think, again, this is, I'm not trying to dismiss the concern from the public. I actually think it's quite reasonable, given the past history of the district. But it's that the role of this committee would not, we're not delegating any decision-making authority to that committee, right?
Correct, and, uh, two things. One, in, in this case, in fact, the only thing that it happens is. The board can't make a decision until it has an advisory committee, but it's the board's decision to make. And, um, I'll look at a legal counsel who just wants to, uh, clarify the role of the committee in this process.
I, I mean, unless there's any specific questions, I think Commissioner Alexander is, is spot on. That the board ultimately, the, the buck stops here and, and all information, all accountability. All decisions, all public input, all roads lead back here. So you are not in any way, shape or form. Even in the slightest, delegating any authority to some committee to make these grandiose decisions. That's just not a thing. That's not the law and that's not what's being asked today.
So, I'm gonna. Go on a tangent here for a second, but what I know is the I E P process, that's my wheelhouse, right? And when you write a measurable goal in the I E P process, the best practice is to have short-term objectives so that you don't. A year from when you start, get into a meeting and find out that no progress has been made and find out that everyone's frustrated, right? So. And I kind of feel like that's where we are. Again, part of my healthy skepticism, our most recent committee was the high school task force. And we're right now having to hold more meetings to get more community feedback. Because at the inception, we didn't bring all the community partners into the, and the educational partners into the room that needed to be there. So, if we are going to be. If, if, if this advisory committee, so first of all, this isn't an action item. So we'll be, we would have to vote on the advisory committee next month, is that correct? So that's question one. Question two, if we did, what parameters or guardrails can we put in place for progress monitoring and process monitoring? To make sure that it actually lives up to the expectations that the community needs and deserves?
Yeah, so we are saying, um, that to move forward with the discussions, yes, we would propose that next month the board. Uh, approve forming this committee. And then as, uh, uh, Dawn has shared here. Having then regular updates to the board and to the public on what has been happening with the, um, with, uh, the district advisory committee. And, you know, uh, and I hear your concerns about the high school task force, but I think that group has been very transparent in terms of. The meetings that have happened and, and the meetings that have happened and you, um, the records from those meetings, the minutes. Um, just, you know, and what they've learned. And so you can, you know, we would make all of that accessible through this process.
And with respect, there have been many of us stating from the beginning of the high school task force that there hasn't been special education representation on the committee. And every meeting I've attended or what I've heard, that has been comment provided over and over and over again. I mean, it's not been addressed. So again, transparency and actually, it's, as community partners, it's engaging, it's, it's incredibly frustrating to. Having been there less than a year ago to sit in the back of a room in a meeting like this and then show up. Body over a minute and just feel like you get patted on the head and shoved out the door and your input isn't taken into account. We've got to break that cycle.
Well, I have just a question about, not to believe in the real estate thing, but would. Discussion of usage of like Seventh and Lawton and teacher housing or renegotiation of leases so that they're raised back up to market rates. Um, be, be, I heard the potential for you, just so we can look at, uh, not. Um, how we are using our property and how we could, um. Realize more both funding, but also potentially more housing. Um, because I know that those are properties that have languished, languished. And I've appreciated the research that has been done by our labor partners to look at, um, potential options to. Better utilize, um, underutilized properties right now.
I'm sure, and thank you for that question. Um, a- again, uh, it's our intention, what I would like to do is have. A public conversation with the district advisory committee that is broader than the legal mandate. Again, thinking about like, that was the baseline, but we want to do more than that. That talks about our overall strategy for our assets. So, because I think that's important to get feedback. We've been, again, very focused on individual issue, issues. We talk about facility use permits over here. The occasional nonprofit tenant lease over there, then we talk about housing again later over here. And then occasionally, there's something that comes up as well, where the city in particular is looking for ways that we can collaborate together. And think around the city's overall institutional public agency holdings. And think about ways that we could all be coordinating together better. So I'd like to talk about all of those issues. With the district advisory committee. Uh, with respect to what the legal minimum is for what that bo- body can make recommendations on. It's again, when we're thinking about, um, long-term disposition of uses that are different than, um. School sites and the, the allowable exemptions. Um, so we, we want to talk about everything, right? And that's because I think that's important for right now, that as we're trying to think about what our strategies are for, again, not just how to. Um, to really focus on thinking about our property as a strategy for generating value for the district. And money is. And money is a part of that. But again, these other goals around housing, community partnerships, community schools, these are also important goals, if not more important goals, that we need to think about.
This will, we'll kind of close up this section. We'll transition to public comment. I had one more comment to make. I think the struggle that I have with the things listed under the bold proposals is they sound very similar to conversations that we've had as a district before that didn't result or lead to any kind of transformational change or better outcomes for our students. The level of detail included in here, I think, is worrying and doesn't really provide any indication of what the district's intentions are. Having this come before the board, before there was a more robust community conversation and the ability to answer questions that the public has and their concerns, I think puts all of us at a very bad position where this meeting isn't able to kind of fully meet the needs of the public and their desire to get all their questions answered. And I, I think just overall, the approach the district has historically taken to making these kind of changes, to me, has always seemed a little bit backwards in so much that it starts with the district going through a process that doesn't involve a lot of the key stakeholders and experts and really leaves them out of the process until it's almost too late for them to kind of really leverage their expertise to make sure we end up with something that works for everyone. And so I, I think just moving forward, we'd really love to just see more, more details in like what we mean and how we're defining things and how things are going to be different. And what is our real commitment to making sure these things happen in a way that are in alignment with our goals and guardrails, but also with our values and the expectations that the students, families, and staff have for us? I think just looking at this, it doesn't really indicate any of the things I feel like we as a board have been trying to signal to our school community about how we're approaching this. And so I'm really hoping that as we can engage in more conversations through town halls and community meetings with the public to kind of talk about the steps we're, we're taking, that folks can have more clarity and transparency in how the district is seeing and approaching it. And just, and I think that also will create a little bit more trust and confidence with commissioners as we move forward. And you go off and you do these tasks and we expect you to bring back something. That's better than what we've been dealing with before. So I think with that, I'll close my comments and go to you, Superintendent.
Did you want to add one more thing? This will be our last brief comment.
To that point, and piggybacking on what Commissioner Westman Ward said earlier, if we look at slide thirty-one, I would encourage more actionable, you know. For example, instead of establish the school staffing model, let's implement one. Let's get to where we want to get. Instead of recommend additional measures on point five, how about institute equitable measures to align? Like, let's, let's actually take the action. Let's get there. Let's get where we need to get, taking into account everything that President Bogus just said. We need to, we need to stop talking about planning to make a plan. We need to actually get to the point of the action, right?
Okay, so thank you for that. Let me just, again, as, as we go back to the the goals and what we wanted to leave with today. So to that last point, I'm hearing wanting, as we're moving forward with, with these proposals, wanting to be clear and maybe even wanting to have heard tonight some clarity, like what does this actually mean? So we actually have a part two of this workshop. We'll see if we get it to go a little bit more deep into what does it mean to talk about staffing? And, and what does it look like to establish, establish and implement a school staffing model? So we'll see if we don't get that tonight, we'll, we'll find another opportunity to share that. Also here, here clearly the need to make sure where the student voice is involved in this and the specific ask around the Student Advisory Council having access to the, to the information and the discussions that are going to be had. And then what I haven't, I, yeah, so again, we feel it's important to go through, in, in order of honoring guardrail one, to go through this process and to have a centralized committee that does provide feedback and suggestions along the way, that has that cross-sectional representation. If it's going to be a, one that can also make recommendations around the, you know, use of property and leases, then it would need to follow that, those guidelines and the, the board would need to appoint it. If, if not, then we saw that cross-sectional representation, but as Dawn has shared, then if we wanted to make anything, make any recommendations around our property, we'd have to do something differently. So I think this is where I just want to affirm what I'm hearing from the, from the board. If the DAC, if, I guess I'm questioning what I, what am I hearing from the board? If we're going to bring forward a DAC, what, you know, what are you looking for in terms of that? I think the things that I've heard is that we would want to see that there's been excuse me, clear stakeholder communication and dialogue, I think, before it comes back to the board and that people are understanding kind of the focus and the intentions and the parameters around it, kind of beyond what is included in the board. And I, I think also understanding of how it isn't going to be focused on like liquidating assets and just minimizing kind of at the cost of everything else that we're trying to do. I think those are the things that leads from me to other commissioners. Want to add, the mic is off.
I, I just would want to understand how community voice is actually going to be. I want to, I want to understand how we're going to do things differently with this advisory committee and actually get to the point of having community members. Actually, I'd love to hear during public comment. Have this day about. I mean, we I think that's part of the problem is, is we sit here in this fishbowl and make assumptions without engaging the public in even the formation of the advisory committee. So lots of work to do.
If there's no other commissioners, we'll transition into public comment. I'm going to ask if commissioners and Sundogs would mind going back to our seats just a way we kind of not have our facts to vote. And then I would ask if Ms. Lucille could start the process for in-person public comment.
I'll be calling names, just one moment. So we would like to understand how many folks on Zoom would also like to speak to public comment. You won't be speaking first, but we'd like for you to know, or we'd like to know how many would like to speak. So could you please raise your hand now so we can get an idea of how many would like to speak to this item this evening? And also have that repeated in Spanish and Chinese. Thank you. Again, if you're on the Zoom and you care to speak to this item tonight, please raise your hand right now. We will be getting to you after the in-person public comment, but we would like to know the amount of folks we have online who would like to speak. Thirty-one. Okay, we are going to start in-person public comment. I'm going to be calling folks up in the groups of five. So if you hear your name, please come line up at the podium. Each person will have one minute to speak. And a lot of people would like to speak tonight, so please stick within your time so we can get through everybody that would like to speak. All right, Dorothy Hurley or Curry, I think. I'm sorry if I'm mispronouncing. I can't read. Stam Murphy. Kelly Walsh. Allison, Eddie. Radek. And Frank Lara. Ready? Go ahead. No, hit the button.
Can you hear me now? Okay, going to give the honor to God first and then to the superintendent and everybody else. So, yes. This is all about the money, the multi-dollar, are we here for our kids? Just to, just to put it down. And that's for the superintendent.
We're not, we can't.
Okay, everybody, you can answer the question. I don't care who answered.
The, the dice, nobody to die is can speak during public comment. It's a one-way interaction for you, the public to speak to the dice. But that, that's.
Oh, they can't retain the message. They can't.
And not, it's, it's the law.
Oh, it's a law. Well, y'all can see how many meanings, meanings I've been to, but I plan on being at more. But that's where I'm at. That's what I think it's about. And most of it says, and it's sad because we're supposed to be fixing the schools and not trying to get rid of them. And, you know, hey, if we all going to be together, let's all be on the same accord. And not let's be, somebody's up here and somebody's down here, you know, let's meet here. So that's my comment tonight. Amen.
Thank you.
Hi, both my children are at Buena Vista Horace Mann, and I'd just like to remind you, both my children drink lead in the water. And I will bring that up absolutely every single time I speak because I will never, never, never get over that, never. And that was under the current, you know, facilities sort of pyramid of control we have. So yes, I have no trust, none. And I have no trust in the facilities chart at all because it currently Buena Vista has a, a school accountability card as exemplary. I mean, anybody who's dark in the doorway of Buena Vista knows it's not exemplary for facilities. School closures do not improve outcomes. SPED will be disproportionately affected. I have left the CAC, the SPED CAC, because exactly what Alita Fisher said. I am frustrated because our advisory says the same thing every year and things don't get done. So, yeah.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Kelly Walsh and I am a parent at Willie Brown. And I'm a little bit sort of appalled by these guiding principles. You all purported that the district and that the administration has not done justice or done it for our, our brown and black students, for our SPED students. And then you showed data that showed in interest in enrollment and where students live without any data around which schools are serving which students. How can we look at a map that shows interest when we know that interest is really fueled by racism, right? By the fact that we have not, you know, it's the driving factor, like Wes, we know this, right? And so how can we, how can you show data like that and say that we're going to be, you know, equity-driven? And this process is going to be guided by that? When your, when your first principal says money will follow the students and where enrollment is, like, that does not in any way signal to me as a parent that you are caring about equity or caring about our black and brown students and our SPED students and.
Thank you.
Good evening, Dr. Wayne. Good evening, board members. I did just want to say, Mr. Cloud, Executive Vice President of UBSF, I do think our district is at a crossroads and this message is really towards the leadership and the discussion that you are having, so take part with you will. We have an example of fifteen SLP members who have yet to be paid in summer the correct amount of dues. And one thing that I did want to highlight is that when I reached out to the new leadership team, I did so because I actually do see them have a complete different practice in them getting results. And I want to highlight the difference because this district is at a current crossroads and we get lost if we're just bringing in everything at the same time. The superintendent, your team right now, followed up, got the answer. Beneath all that, and the reason I raise this is because beneath all that is a culture of indifference. It's a culture where you're, where there's a lot of middle management that doesn't follow through and need to be held accountable. You can't do this on your own. And what we're watching, and what the board also needs to watch is those results. And some of those results, you may not like the result of who's behind those things. So we need those answers. We need solutions. We need those tough conversations to happen to lead to the result. So again, thank you to that team, to, to your team who is actually following through. But we need more of that accountability, not just in conversation, but in the actual school sites and the students we serve.
Thank you. Cassandra Curio. Jamil Patterson. Bernice Casey. Him, I'm sorry if I mispronounced, Tabal Leon and Natalie Luizy.
All right, good evening, everybody. Cassandra Curio, President of United Educators. By now, everybody's seen the white paper, pumpkin patches and payday loans. If you haven't, you can download it. In there, we highlight a series of solutions, right? And we've said this for years now. It's my third year beginning the school year like this. We come solution-driven. We are student-centered because we are surrounded by students at all times. So we know that there are many, many steps to take ahead of any discussions around any closure and or merger in order to get the district's business in order. Before, we put it on the backs of any student, any family, any school community at all. The brunt of that conversation should not lead to this level of anxiety before we know that the district has looked inside its own house and corrected situations. In addition to that, and I want to highlight a couple of solutions to look further into. We've heard a lot about enrollment tonight, declining enrollment, enrollment expectations. And there's two things that the district could do right now to look. First is the enrollment system, which Commissioner Sanchez, you brought up very expertly, that we aren't implementing the operations currently to change what you had initially started in that discussion. Enrollment does not like magically happen. If our families were allowed to show up to the schools in their neighborhood, the schools closest to their choice, then that would be true. Enrollment could be a, a choice, but we know that that's not happening. They're placed there. So it's schools that look over enrolled. The question is, who put them there? Right? And the schools that are under-enrolled and having worked at Vis Valley Middle School for eleven years, struggling, like working with, with our whole school community to work on enrollment issues and seeing the flux happen, we know where that starts. And it starts actually in February of, in, in the office, right, like in EPC. You can tell what's going to happen in the following years. And then in addition to that, you know what's going to happen in third grade? Because what we know as educators, I've been in this for thirteen years now. I know that in third grade, our students in elementary school and families that are looking to exit the middle school system hop back in in high school. And that is programmatic change that's necessary, that we've kind of like kept project out and no longer needs to happen, right? If we had systematically issued strategies that work so that our school sites all feel a sense of belonging, are high quality, that the programming isn't willy-nilly, right? That all the arts education, the athletics, and that every school offering, language pathways weren't halfway across the city, but instead at every opportunity, then we'd have a strategic measure for us to work on getting enrollment back. And I'd like to point, my last point is that we referenced the facilities master plan that was adopted already. Well, I think it was like in the slides twenty-four or something, right? It goes through the whole thing. But I think it's slide twenty-four around enrollment, where the facilities master plan referenced an increase in enrollment that was projected. So what's happened between now and then, that I'm hearing tonight, that perhaps enrollment isn't increasing? That sounds like a contradictory board doc, or at least a contradictory point. It could have changed, but also if you look at SFUS, San Francisco City Census, we know that of our fifty thousand students, there's another fifty thousand that are sitting at an alternative here in the city. There's a hundred thousand youth-age, school-age children or under eighteen in this city right now, thirteen percent of our population. Those are all opportunities to welcome back into the public school system. And we need you to take the change so that we can teach them because I know I want more time with students and I want more students when I get back into the classroom. And I need you to do that for me. Thanks.
I'm sort of a better man in my city purse, right? So, you know, don't just come up with all these stats and these conversations and just to come up with the decision to say, let's just cut all the schools in the black and brown neighborhoods. I've been in this movie before, right? And then, you know, we just seen this attack on city. Uh, and then, you know, we just seen this attack on City College, which is how a lot of people rebound. Me and Ken went to City College together. Uh, Justin Herman, uh, Jim Jones, Matt Wayne. Hey, yeah, we've had our villains, right? You know, I know you don't want to be a villain, but I, I'm gonna tell y'all the scariest thing about what I heard tonight, right? Cause I heard very little about the actual education. Right? And that's what I want to get on, especially in the age of technology. Y'all learn to play.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Bernice Casey. I'm a parent of a child at Buena Vista Horace Mann and one at Lowell High School. Um, it was pretty disturbing when the meeting started and I heard Dr. Wayne talk about his shock or surprise about a room at Cleveland being hot. Go to Buena Vista, it's ninety-two degrees. And we've been bringing these complaints in writing to this body for six, seven, eight years. Very little has changed. And when we need to make decisions as voters, when you have data, the facility condition index, we've brought this up multiple times. The district used school accountability reports, as Sam talked about, where Buena Vista is exemplary. So I don't trust any of the data presented. And then finally, when you're talking about passing the buck, you're gonna make changes, all of you voted for millions of dollars to be spent on contracts that, that didn't happen. I mean, Commissioner Fisher didn't do it the whole time, but the rest of you did. You've already made damages to the district. And now you're saying, oh, believe us this time. Yeah.
Hi, everyone. My name is Natalie Hrezie. I'm a teacher librarian unreleased and I serve as a substitute, uh, Vice President of Substitutes for UESF. Also the parent of a middle schooler at James Lake Middle School and a third grader at Buena Vista Horace Mann. And the toxicity there is real. My child still won't drink from water fountains. I want to start first by appreciating our student delegates, by censoring the students. Thank you. And I want to make two points. One is about assumptions. I saw a lot of data presented that made assumptions that didn't sit quite right with me. I saw a pool of our schools that spend more public dollars with high student outcomes. When we know that student outcomes are often generated by the zip code you live in, the socioeconomic status of your parents, and their educational attainment. Not by whether they spent more dollars or not, or whether the PTA can add another million dollars into serving those students' needs. Second, I want to talk about implementation. Everyone who's on the ground should have the same amount of time to make a similar presentation. We know as educators, the reality.
Thank you.
Of what our students are facing. We should be right here at this table.
Thank you.
Able to speak with you all. I want to say one more thing. When we go to our members to do a survey, we go to them and we talk to every single one. We don't set up a committee. We need to see a plan where you speak to all of us at the times we're available to speak with you.
Okay, next five speakers, please come to the podium. Lisa Alshama, or Aissa, I'm sorry if I'm mispronouncing, John Transvina, Lilian Chen, Mackenzie Coroio, Rafael Picasso.
Before we have anyone give public comment, I did want to, uh, release our student delegates as we are at the, the time for them to exit. Thank you so much for your participation.
Go ahead.
My name is Asa. I go by they/them pronouns. I'm a special ed teacher in an autism-focused class at Gradden Elementary School, and most of my students are non-verbal. There are many outrageous and painful things I've been pressured to do by this district, like working extra hours without pay, working through sickness, working without a full staff team. But probably the worst thing I've been pressured to do by this district is lie to my families. Thousands of minutes on my caseload alone have been unserved in my two years of teaching this role. And I've been asked to lie about this to families to avoid lawsuits. But my families know, because when I call home and say their child was bitten or scratched in the face, they know that their child is not getting the education they rightfully owed. Aligning resources for our district must begin with fully staffing and supporting our schools and our special ed programs and saving our most marginalized students with integrity. I'm telling you now, I'm not lying to my families anymore. Look, you two of them right behind me. We stand together to demand that this issue do everything in its power to end its history of fiscal mismanagement and keep our schools open and fully staffed. If you trust the people, they become trustworthy, transparent voices.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Mackenzie Corolo, and, um, I just want to start to say that I am a parent at Gotten. And being at this meeting, I fully came in coming to support my school, not only, but hoping to help my district or my school, San Francisco, go in the right direction. Um, ha- watching that man be taken out of this meeting, that's hard to watch as a parent. And you guys have talked about saying that you want to hear our voices and you want all that, but you just had half of us walk out. And I want to know what they had to say. I want to know what their struggles as the parents are, because every slide that you went through, I could have helped you tonight. I could definitely have told you how hard it is to take my kid from by the baseball stadium over to Coal Valley. It takes me an hour each way. And then I'm also gonna read you my comment, and I want to read the whole thing to you. My name is Mackenzie Coro. My son Cooper Coro is in his second year at Gotten in the pre-K special day class. Cooper soared his first year, and I know that we are lucky to be at Gotten. I will start the enrollment process again next spring, praying and hoping that Cooper will remain at Gotten. Gotten is a great school, but last year we were severely understaffed with several vacant parrot positions all year. Our biggest challenge since being at Gotten is the number of times I've had to keep my child home due to the parish shortage, when it was unclear if he could safely attend school. A weekly routine is essential to Cooper's success, and when he misses a day or two, we can see the effects. I come here tonight as a parent who dreamed of raising her child in San Francisco and all the memories that comes with. I ask you to address the low starting hours of all our educators so that programs like the one at Gotten will continue to exist. And then we want to teach in San Francisco. School closures are not the answer. Now is the time to be investing in our schools and our children, so our children can thrive. Please help San Francisco families stay here and keep our kids in school. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Just a reminder that if you don't stick to your time, you're taking away from others to speak. Thank you. Go ahead.
My name is Lilian Lynn, and I'm a parent of student with IEP at Lowell High School. I'm here to address a pressing concern as severe staffing shortages affecting our school. My son, Colin, missed the first eight-day off this school year due to the lack of parent support, assigned case manager, and teacher. That impacted his mental well-being and learning progress. The shortage of teacher and parent educator is affecting student, family, teacher, and staff across our district. Why, I appreciate, uh, effort being made and everyone trying to do the best they can. It's crucial that we take concrete step to prevent, prevent father home. Our district had over a hundred parent educator vacancy, many teacher vacancy, and the number keep rising. My son missed, uh, yesterday was the first day that he went to, he was able to attend school, and he is in a classroom with a teacher with emergency credential. So training is really professional development is crucial to those teachers. So, uh, the teacher can be successful and supported. So the teacher, uh, the student can be meaningfully accessed through their curriculum. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm, uh, John Transvina. I'm a proud product of our public schools and I'm a homeowner in Inglesize, a superintendent. I'm very pleased that you mentioned Balboa, Cleveland. Uh, we're often kind of forgotten out there. Uh, congratulations to the superintendent, the board, teachers for recognizing the fiscal and academic crisis facing the San Francisco Unified School District and San Francisco. For far too long, we have all been in denial. So this is a first step forward, as difficult as this conversation is tonight, and it will be in the future. Uh, but these battles go back to the nineteen seventies, even before Prop thirteen, before the seventy-eighth strike, as students were saving arts, pub, uh, sports and, and other programs. Virtually every January, our teachers would get layoff notices, and by May or June, the district would magically find money to keep them, keep them aboard for the following semester. On the efforts going forward, please utilize San Francisco Unified School District alums. We're grateful for all our teachers and programs and experiences that we can give back in myriad ways to the future of the school district. San Francisco's future starts here. Thank you.
Thank you. Rafael, are you here? Rafael Picasso?
No, he went home.
Thank you. I don't. Calling the next group, Jeff Shinsky, Josh Davidson, Jenny Moore, Virginia Marshall, Patrick Wolf.
Hi, I'm Jeff Shinsky, parent of, uh, children at San Francisco Community School. Uh, we've heard a lot about, uh, staffing shortages and issues here, and I think that a common theme is that it's really hard to trust the this body's ability to move forward with our ambitious plans. If we can't fix the immediate crises going on in our school right now, especially around staffing. And I'm going to give voice to the hun- over a hundred families in the S of the community that are quite disturbed that it's been multiple years now, going on two years, without a math educator in middle school. Not one. We're short-staffed, we're unstaffed in, in middle school math. And we're going to the point where it's entirely likely some people could go through their entire middle school career without math education in middle school. And I don't understand how that can happen. It's, uh, uh, I, I don't understand how the superintendent is not more embarrassed at this, more embarrassed at the other crises that we're hearing here. I understand that it's not the board's job to implement the new operations of the school, but I don't understand how they're not doing pressure to fix crises like not having any math educator in an entire middle school for multiple years. And so I would ask that, uh, the, the hope to establish trust by addressing some of these immediate crises and providing any staffing at all, um, which is necessary in some of these classrooms.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Josh Davidson. I have the pleasure of cooking at McAtier High School. Uh, I, a school which, uh, the board saw fit to celebrate, uh, last spring when you awarded Mina Benitez, who works on my team, uh, a rave award. We were very grateful for that. And, uh, I have to say, I'm not excited that this school now has a sword dangling over the head of all the students, and the students notice. Uh, so please keep in mind, uh, in the interest of providing some bold proposals that the district might consider to bust the status quo, I'm very excited that we're here now. Let's try a year without anyone with director or executive director in their title and see how that goes. Or maybe we could do a year without high-priced personal services consultants. What do you think? Right? We could actually give everybody their paychecks correctly and on time and see if that holds for attention. We could hire enough frontline staff to do all the work that needs to be done at the schools. Or we could replace the board with the high school students who clearly have a much better view.
Thank you.
To be done. Thank you.
Thank you, Doc.
Hi, I'm, I'm Jenny Moore. I'm a parent of two, uh, children at Academy High School, which I know is on the chopping block, even though I'm, because it's not. It's really frustrating. Um, I have a junior and a senior. I'm just so distressed that there is talk about closing our school. Um, and I, I, there's so many benefits to small schools and I, I find small high schools so beautiful, and I won't belabor those points. Um, but I do want to just point out, there's so much has come up, you know, to being in this meeting, but we do have a very high minority population that will be, uh, affected badly. We do also have a high sped population. My daughter's part of that. That's going to be negatively impacted by the closing of our school, uh, or merging, or whatever you want to call it. Um, and I just want to say that for a personal note with my family, my daughter, my junior daughter is going to be very affected by this because she's gonna have to spend her senior year somewhere else. And that's ridiculous. She spent three years fostering relationships with her teachers and her friends and the fellow students, and that's just gonna get blown up, um, which is really frustrating. Um, and it's really unfair to her class, because her class was also the class that lost their eighth-grade year.
Thank you.
Um, more quick, my daughter, my other daughter, the sped daughter, she would have fallen through the cracks at any big school. It's why I chose Academy for her. I chose Academy and I chose June Burden as our second choice, because she needs the special, uh, she needs special ed, she needs small class sizes, and, uh, she's now gonna be eligible for graduation and eligible to go to any school she wants, and I hundred percent credit that with her being at a small school. So, thank you.
Patrick Wolf, here, Patrick. Okay, I'll be calling the next group. Supriya Ray. Susan Wong. Noah Sloss. Chris Klaus. Chanel Blackwell. Please come to the podium.
Good evening, everyone. This is Supriya Ray. I want to thank you all for taking the time to have this workshop and engaging in this kind of discussion, which I know is difficult and frustrating and emotion-provoking for everyone. I appreciate the work that you're putting in. I also wanted to make a couple of points around how critical it will be as, um, the district faces up to this very difficult budget crisis to, uh, to keep focus on students, and I want to encourage you to do that, to make sure that every dollar that we have is spent in a way that best serves students and achieves student success. I would also like to emphasize, fundamentally, people have to want to go to SFUSD. Families have to want to go here. There's a lot of talk about declining enrollment. And, uh, you know, I assume the district's numbers are correct. At the same time, I think that we could increase enrollment potentially, and to do that, you actually have to welcome people. You can't be, and this is true of the board and the district, and also true of many members of the public. You have to actually welcome all people to come to the school and come to the school district. We will be stronger with families of all sorts are coming to this school district. So I really hope that you will make people feel welcome and not make so many families, I know who have left the district personally, feel like the district was telling them or other people were telling them, you know, don't let the door hit you on the way out. So please make everybody feel welcome. I think that will be the best for making the school district as strong as it can be, and ultimately also the best for helping keep our schools strong and helping the most vocal, the populations, the most disadvantaged students. Thank you.
Hi, uh, my name's Noah Sloss. I'm a public school parent and I'm with the San Francisco Education Alliance. I encourage all of you to check out our blog. We got a lot of great research in there. Um, um, the premise of a lot of these presentations is that closing schools, consolidating schools will solve all our problems. Uh, well-paid teachers, safe schools, whatever people's, uh, part, you know, we have many issues that we've heard. Tonight, we heard, we hear that the, the reason we have to have a DAC is to deal with the schools that are already closed that have been sitting vacant for decades. Um, so I would want to propose, um, committing to no school closures for the next two years until the existing sites are fully utilized. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Susan Wong. I've had, uh, three children in the school district. They're, uh, they've graduated. Uh, but I hope the Board of Education will seriously consider all the difficult choices, uh, facing it. Uh, if you conduct business as usual, it will lead to a state takeover of the district. Is this what we want? I don't think so. As a parent, I ask you to please work with us to reverse the enrollment decline. I just, as, as Supriya said, many parents have left the district in frustration. If you're not willing to fight every, every year for what goes on in the district, and it, it, it just, it's so easy just to leave because of the attitude of so many people you meet in administration. But then again, I've loved a lot of the teachers my children had, and I, 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 I take that as such a great blessing, and I know that the district can reverse the enrollment decline, because offer what, o- offer people what people need and want, and don't say you can't do it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Chanel Blackwell, parent, um, parent advocate of, of two, um, two sons, twelve and seventh grade. Um, thanks for hearing our voice. I hope that student outcome will be addressed in these board meetings continually to focus on reading, literacy, math, and especially bringing back in grade math, um, algebra in college. um, algebra in college or trade school readiness as well as providing wellness. That is very important for San Francisco public students. Um, I spoke with, um, parents today in, um, the black and brown, um, um, communities and they want the same as, as what I just addressed, talked about. The best for our children and is willing to participate, making sure these are addressed. We believe if these outcomes are practiced, their enrollment will increase. Community wants the trust, but we had, you know, had to earn that trust just to need to see more action moving forward, a plan is what the student governor said. Fixing our budget is going to be hard. Not fixing it will be harder. Our students are the only winners or losers here. We got to operate within our means.
Thank you.
Thank you for being a service for our kids.
I'm Chris Klaus, a sped teacher at Washington High School, and I want to urge the board in any discussion of realigning district resources to remember their goal to be student-centered. Students need schools to attend and fill educator positions in and out of their classrooms at those schools. They do not need district office, unrepresented admin, already making six-figure salaries to receive substantial raises when their educators can't afford to stay in SFUSD or when their school communities are under threat of closure. They do not need continued mismanagement of funds by SFUSD. They need true zero-based budgeting that accounts for their needs from their classrooms and school sites up to the minimum needed in central administration positions to keep things running. If you'd like to learn more about SFUSD's financial mismanagement, check out the report referenced earlier and released yesterday by UESF at bit.ly/uesfwhitepaper. Thanks.
Thank you. Um, I'm calling the final six people for in-person. Vivette Brackett, Meredith Dodson, although she may be online, um, Vanessa, sorry, I can't read the last name from Parents for Public Schools. Oh, um, Brandy Markman, Jeff Lucas, and Kelly Gilliam.
Okay. The system is not working for our students because this district and this board continues to divest in our most marginalized students while investing in historically over-resourced schools. Your budget development report, which includes the position changes at the school sites for this 23, 24 school year, includes you adding two new ROTC teachers to Balboa and you took away their wellness counselor. And MLK, they're losing classroom teachers and an academic response to intervention. At Buena Vista Horseman, they're losing their music teacher and literacy specialist and social worker. Drew is losing two teachers and their community relations, relation specialist. Everett Middle School is losing two teachers. Mir is losing two teachers and lost their Arabic family liaison. LOL is actually increasing by getting four assistant principals, 16 more teachers, three more visual arts teachers, one more social worker, two more security guards on the campus for a total of an increase of 21 more FTE. This continuous improvement is non-existent because this district has gotten worse in every category since this board and superintendent has taken over.
Thank you.
Both your universal and targeted goals are terrible and this budget shows you have no intention of making anything better.
Hello, my name is Brandy Markman. I'm a public school parent, also with the San Francisco Education Alliance. We are very much opposed to these school closures and will be organizing with parents with schools throughout the district. Um, I don't think anybody can trust a district and administration who, that can't even fix its payroll system. This has been going on for over a year. This is wage theft. In any other district or company, the person at the top wouldn't have his job. Why should we trust you if you can't even pay our teachers and staff and parent professionals on time? Therefore, there's no reason for us to trust this process. There's no reason. We know that there are lots of vested real estate interests behind closing these schools. We know there was real estate money that went into this recall. This is the reason that why a lot of you are here. We follow the money. We will be continuing to follow the money and we will stand for equity. It is not fair to prioritize closing schools in the southeast part of the, of the San, of San Francisco. That is racist and that is redlining.
Thank you.
Hi, Jeff Lucas, a parent of two alums now of SFUSD. Um, I'm going to offer a different perspective on the, tonight. Um, I wanted to talk about part two, but we'll start with part one. So I appreciate in your workshop goals, you broke it up into five parts. Hopefully they can be taken separately from one another. Start with number one. It looks like the easiest. I appreciate that you're taking a very deliberate process to review, analyze, replace the school site funding process that's been in place for 20 years and it creates issues. It is going to create a huge shift from a completely decentralized funding mechanism to one where the central office is going to, um, have exhibit, I, it looks like some control over, um, positions, uh, that'll be new and challenging. Um, but I appreciate the effort that you're putting into this process and trying to bring the public along. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. So my name is Kelly Gilliam. I live in Noe Valley. So first of all, just to begin, am I a parent? No. Am I retired? Yes. And I sit here and witness everything that's been going on in the news and everything like that. And there's a big, large group of us that are coming together informing because number one, I live in Noe Valley and there's tons of little kids around. We call it the little carriage neighborhood. So when you say that there's no hope for enrollment, you're wrong because I see all those little kids outside of Noe Valley. But aside from that, number one, you talk about, you rush to talk about getting these real estate to get these schools sold. Talking about these kids and why are these two young ladies you had them leave? Personally, I really wanted that young lady to run this meeting. She is a very, and she really is, she's a very, a very well-educated young lady. But this is a joke. It's in the news. It's everything. But you got away with it for too long, too long. These people here, I have heard, listened to everybody as an outsider and all of you sitting there. You look like, oh yeah, we're getting away with it. You're not getting away with it. You've been caught. And you as a superintendent, me as an educated woman, doesn't matter if I'm educated or not, I live in Noe Valley. You are pathetic, disgusting. And I'm going to say it flat out. I have a meeting next week with Nancy Pelosi for something completely different. I'm bringing all this up. I can't believe this is still happening. So I am going to find out all the people in here who are speaking. We're going to get together and a lot more people. This can't be going on except for the woman there, the blonde woman. Very well, loved what she said. But she definitely said exactly to the point, you do too much of this. I ran a business. I retired. This isn't business oriented. You all talk too much.
Thank you.
Hello, uh, my name is Tina Dollison and I am a family member of three kids in the public schools. And, um, so I'm just, I'm appalled about some alleged incident that should have happened and how I got involved in the prejudice and bias that this African-American kid faced at the school, the, the teachers, the vice principal. And I was just, we have, we have really got attorneys now involved, but it was no one to help the parent. It was no one to help me. This has been happening since March and this, and I'm just appalled that the parents that have kids every day that they're dealing with, you know, they have to help. The school district is not doing anything. This why black and brown enrollment is so, is, 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 is low because the schools, this, this, these kids don't feel safe. They're not being protected. The teachers are discriminated against the kids. I witnessed this with my own eyes and it made me sick to my stomach. And now I'm paying thousands of dollars out for an attorney and it just shouldn't be the school district. This kid had to stay out of school for the whole semester. And, 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 and it was just, you know, something needs to change. Thank you.
Good evening to President Bogus, Vice President Wiseman, Ward Superintendent, Wayne Board Commissioners. I'm Virginia Marshall. I am so disappointed to stand here tonight before you to talk about school closures the second week of school because of your fiscal mismanagement. What we should have been hearing from you is about did every school have, every classroom have a credential teacher in that subject area? Are teachers going to get paid this year? Not about the lousy sister you gave so much money to. I want the exclusive graduates this past year, especially African-American children and Latino kids, college-ready. So this, so my thing to my, my, my point to you is please, no school closures. You were at INWAC meeting on Sunday. We've heard some horrific stories about how children are being bullied in our schools, in your schools that you in charge of the first eight days of school. This special meeting could have come next spring. Get student, get everybody settled in school first before you do this. So no school closures, no school closures, no school closures. Thank you.
That concludes in-person public comment.
Why don't we start the process of our virtual public comment and I see 12 hands raised. So I think we will have a cap on 12, 13 commenter.
At this time, we'll take public comment for our virtual participants. Uh, we see 12 hands raised, sorry, 13 hands raised and we'll take those, uh, 13 hands. Each speaker will have one minute to speak. Please keep that in mind so that everyone have their full minute to speak. Can we please have that repeated in Spanish and Chinese? Thank you. Meredith?
Hi, thanks for taking my comment. Um, this is Meredith Dodson, Executive Director and Co-Founder with San Francisco Parent Coalition. Um, there's never been, there never is a good time to start difficult conversations. But, and parents know that this is one we have to have. I don't think there's a single person in that room tonight. I was just there, had to go let the babysitter off. I don't think there's a single person there who thinks that SFUSD has done a good job managing its budget over the last decade. We're not coming to you with suggestions, advice, or ideas, or of how you should or shouldn't tackle this enormous challenge in front of us this year. But we do have an offer, which is thousands of families who are ready to be engaged, give input, share with you what they want to see from our schools as that baseline of excellence and equity as you design this process and figure out how things might look different for SFUSD in the future. We told families in an SF Parent Coalition newsletter today to dream big and maybe on the other side of this, there's a possibility of an actually thriving, excellent, equitable school system. We hope so. We believe it's possible and SF kids can't wait any longer. We hope this year to see parents, teachers, staff, and communities all come together to help the district find solutions that will help set us on the path for a district where every child receives an excellent and equitable education.
Thank you. Rebecca?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Hi, my name is Rebecca Fedorko. I'm a special education teacher for TK. I'm one of two itinerant staff members for the entire school district for TK. I really want you to think about that. Two of us going all over the district to two different schools because we aren't adequately staffing special education because I get calls from recruiters from different agencies offering to pay me nineteen hundred to twenty-five hundred dollars a week to come work for them. And I wonder when I get my paycheck and y'all have deducted eleven hundred dollars for my union dues and one paycheck, am I dumb for continuing to work for SFUSD? But then I go to school and I get to hang out with my students all day and I get to experience the joy and wonderful teaching of all my gen ed teachers. And I do love it. But like all of these parents have said, please, we need to do a way better job of retaining our staff members because we want to teach your kids. But also I would like to buy groceries. Um, so that would be really great if you would enable me to do that. So I don't have to ask my mommy and daddy for some extra money at 32 years old. So I can do that because you have not paid me correctly. Thank you.
Thank you. Rhonda?
Good evening, Board Commissioners, Superintendent Wayne, my name is Rhonda Zaties and I am one of the parent AIPAC leaders. Um, I'm calling this tonight for two reasons. Number one, because we're highly disappointed that our voice is being silenced. We no longer get our opportunity to present in front of the board, which is very important to us because we worked very hard to get the voice of our community and understand their struggles as being open and out loud. And it's making it very hard for us to be able to communicate with you all. And so we ask that you allow us to present once again the way we have for years in order so you can get the feedback and we can get the answers that we need for the recommendations that we've made that we still don't have the answers for. And number two, they should be clear and transparent when it comes to the process of closing the schools. We need to know why. We need to know what schools are going to be closed, what parameters are going to be used for the school closures. And we also would like to know, um, the basis overall for the final decisions. We want to be included throughout the entire process and not be pulled at the end. It's very sad when we have district staff on Ali teams that don't even know that the school closures are happening. This is something that should not be happening in silos. It needs to be full and transparent. If parents are supposed to trust you, transparency breeds trust. You again, do not have anything for us, without us. Good night.
Thank you. Vanessa?
Hi, good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Thank you. So I was one of the people that walked out and it was in solidarity of Reverend Amos Brown. I think the lack of respect in regard to our community is absolutely intolerable. So I'm going to say what I'm going to say, hopefully y'all don't cut me off. Displacement of communities of colors begins with resource consolidation, allocation, alignment, however you want to put it. As you all make decisions around this very issue, I want you to know that at the state and at the federal level, there are districts who are encountering the same issues and who have viable solutions that do not displace young people and their families. I want to encourage you to read an article by Dr. Pedro Nagara called Structural Racism and the Urban Geography of Education. And there you're going to find that usually on the certain parts of the city, in this case it's the east, there is consolidation, the program. I'm going to go ahead and email Superintendent Wayne and his head of communications tomorrow with a couple of public records requests and I'm going to encourage you all to really think about how you're going to implement our next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Allison?
Good evening. My name is Allison Eddie Brodmann. I am with the San Francisco Education Alliance. I don't have much to add to what speakers like Reverend Brown and Vivette and Ms. Marshall had, but I need to, uh, point out that Dr. Wayne began his remarks tonight by saying that, uh, Cleveland, a school in the Excelsior was an arduous journey. Um, an arduous journey for whom? Um, and I wonder if he would make that same comment about LOL, which is just as far out, um, from where he works. Um, but I cannot imagine that if he had said that LOL was an arduous journey, uh, that, uh, the room would not have erupted in booze. That's all.
Thank you. Sarah?
Hello. Hi, um, I, I just want to, uh, ask the board when they're considering uh, various properties that the district owns to consider the placement of high schools in San Francisco and compare that to the density of children. And while I wasn't able to overlay them, it looks to me as though the area with the greatest density of children doesn't have any high schools at all. at all. And there are forty-seven thousand square feet, I believe, available of classroom space that was left by San Francisco State Business School in the Westfield Mall that I believe is still available, that would make a fabulous STEM high school for, that could have connections with business. What we need to do to increase enrollment is to give, is, is to treat parents and students as our customers and give them what they're looking for, which is a pathway to a great future. And they want choices. Parents want bilingual kid, they want to give their kids the gift of being bilingual, but all of our bilingual programs are ninety-ten, which means that they're almost exclusively.
Sorry, I'm so sorry to cut you off. That is your time and we have other folks who need to speak. Thank you. Gina?
Hi, my name is Gina Cargis and I'm a teacher librarian at two schools that serve predominantly black and brown students in the southeast neighborhoods. I'm also a graduate of SFUSD. I wanted to talk today about your consideration of new staffing model and provide some insight into what is actually happening for staff and students at these sites and how that's affecting our most marginalized kids. At one of my schools, we're lacking a resource specialist, a family liaison, a social worker, a nurse, any math teacher at all, and multiple paraprofessionals. At my other site, we have no teacher for our autism-focused specialty class. The district failed to hire fourth grade teacher, a fifth grade teacher, a literacy coach, or an artist. Eldorado, that's the second site, has just consolidated two classes, or rather, the district has consolidated two of Eldorado's classes, literally this week, meaning that kids will now have new teachers and be in combined grade level classes. New staff are also facing unacceptable circumstances. One of our teachers has not been on boarded despite being hired in July, leaving a classroom without a teacher. We are floundering and unable to meet student needs. You're talking about a new staffing model, but there isn't even a staffing model to begin with.
Thank you.
Before closing and consolidating schools, is that time?
That is your time. Thank you so much. Thank you. Tom?
Hi, yes, my name's Tom Anderson. My wife and I are parents of students in the district and we're also special education teachers. You know, what about Empower? That's still not fixed. People are still not being paid correctly. And when we look at our paychecks certificate staff the next day or so, we're not sure if you did it correct. So now we're supposed to just trust you. And please call it what it is. You're closing schools. You're, you're creating committee to do that. And Dr. Wayne, I've asked, visit Dolores Huerta. You haven't. And I bet when you do, you're just going to show up for the photo. You're not going to actually talk to staff and see what we need. We're missing seven or eight paraprofessionals. But my staff and I, we do what we can. But what are you doing to support us? You know, we talked about retaining staff. We're bargaining right now. You want pay people. Stop being greedy. I heard, so I said I've heard, so it's not saying, you know, it's exactly true, but we can find this out, that district staff got a fifteen percent average raise, the central staff. And most of them, I'll tell you.
Thank you.
I don't know what they do back there.
Hafara?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Good evening. My name is Hafara Manning. I'm a parent of two black boys, a teacher at MLK, former substitute in the district at the hardest to staff schools through TK-12. I propose no school, no school closures of creative use of properties and restoration of programs and courses that have been taken away from my experience since the nineties, maybe earlier. For example, metal shop, wood shop, home economics, music programs, theater, athletics, things that will help students have, gain life skills since they have to be in class for six hours a day for most of the year. Examples of creative use of property would be, for example, families that are close to home if they choose, but having transportation that to, to sites where that may have, that may have courses or programs that they're interested in taking. And also that may increase enrollment and prevent families from looking for alternative options to educate their children and to help prepare their children for life, especially since they have to spend most of their time in the schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Caller ending in one, seven, two. Caller ending in one. Go ahead, please.
Yes, good evening. My name is Naj Daniel. And I would like to say that you need to consider the kids who will be affected by school closures when realigning district resources. Consider the greater impact to the most at risk of this already vulnerable population of marginalized students. I represent a ten-year-old that attends Star King with the hope to attend a middle school in her district. This is her fifth grade year. That is not a huge ask. So please consider the kids that are going to be affected by these school closures. Thank you.
Thank you. Larry?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay. Hi, this is Larry Lee. I feel that the San Francisco Board of Education are all just complaining and being victims instead of offering solutions like Superintendent Matt Wayne. I also think if anything will get done, then the board will just have to have the Board of Education or the board itself just represent everything that Superintendent Matt Wayne proposes. Otherwise, everything will take too long and nothing will get done. We don't want to have a state, a state takeover, the California state takeover. And also, why is San Francisco always complaining and blaming? Where was the United Educator of San Francisco leader in the last three, five, or 10 years? I want to see the United Educator of San Francisco have specific plans or solutions instead of just complaining. They should help out the Superintendent Matt Wayne. Everyone should be helping him out and standing cheering him down.
Thank you. That is your time. Thank you. Caller ending in one, zero, zero. Caller ending in one, zero, zero.
Good evening. My name is Cheryl Thornton and I am the Youth Advisor for the San Francisco NAACP. And first of all, I would like to say, no school closures, especially in the southeast section of San Francisco. San Francisco has the worst outcomes for black children in the state of California and as well as brown children. There's a fifty percent high school dropout rate for black and brown children. There's been disinvestment in the black community for years. These kids go to school and they have aces from the trauma that they receive at school because it's not safe. We need mental health providers. We need teachers and the kids don't need to have to travel way across town, especially the very young children who are kindergarten through third grade. So please, no school closures.
Thank you. Come on?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Hi, my name is Damon Heemhis. I'm a product of SFUSD and currently a parent in the city. First off, I want, I would like to say that I fully support Superintendent Matt Wayne. And secondly, we know that in the city, there are families that have a choice to attend a school in SFUSD. We know that there are families that do not have that choice. Either they are forced to move away so they cannot attend, or they are quote unquote stuck with SFUSD, as I was. Still, it seems that one way to increase SFUSD enrollment is to attract those that do have that choice. So I ask you, please, focus your attention on the families that have that choice. Please, listen to them. Please, do not scare them away. Thank you.
Thank you. Our final two speakers will be Suzanne and caller ending in four, six, five. Again, that'll be Suzanne and then caller ending in four, six, five. Suzanne, go ahead, please.
Well. Well, now. I don't know if I can.
Caller ending in four, six, five. Caller ending in four, six, five. Go ahead, please.
Hi, good evening. My name's Mary Travis Allen. I'm with the American Indian community. I'm speaking to you, number one, no school closures. I'm going to speak about educational equity, where our students, especially the American Indian students, who are more likely to not graduate from school as it is. But with more school closures, all you're doing is consolidating the problem. If you don't know the problem, how can you have the solution? I'd like to know the data that you have about declining enrollment in those demographics. Which schools? Who's been affected? And how it aligns with this economy here where people cannot afford to live in this city? Those are the things that you need to be honest about and forthright about. If you want to build trust, you can't just expect trust without solving, identifying the problem and solving them for the community.
Thank you.
As Wilma Mankiller, as Wilma Mankiller said, those that control the education of our students, control our future. We hold that to heart.
That does conclude our virtual public comment for this item.
Thank you so much to the public, for everyone who's come out to participate. At this time, we're going to let the superintendent offer a final response and then we will adjourn our meeting. Thank you, President Bogus. And yes, we had potentially a part two to the workshop. The information is there. Just to provide, the intent was to provide a more concrete picture of what we mean we'll be looking at when we start, start talking about bringing proposals forward. But I appreciate the time we spent in conversation as a board and even in hearing all the comments this evening. Yeah, yeah, I started off by sharing, we need to have some, this is the start of a conversation that, and this space the Board of Education had, but we need to have as a community. And what, you know, I heard tonight is what I love about San Francisco and also highlights the challenges we're going to face and our need to come together. Because what I heard tonight, and no, everybody wants what's best for our students. And in order to do that, we're going to need to come together and be able to identify what does that mean we're providing for them each and every day in our schools. Because as I said, right now, we know we're not providing what they need. And so we have to do business differently. How we're going to do that business differently? Tonight was about sharing where you'll see some concrete recommendations and proposals. And it was also about sharing that in developing those, we're going to talk with those who will impact and get the best ideas in this community. And so while a difficult conversation tonight, I'm excited that we're having this conversation and want to end by how we began talking about the reason we're having these conversations is for our students. And we have two students who are here tonight who everybody appreciated what they shared, who are at the end of their educational career here in SFUSD, seniors who will be graduating. And we need to keep them and then the students who are just beginning their career, recognizing that the decisions we're making this year will either set them up for success, which I know what we, was what, or will continue some of those challenges that we face as a district. So I know this Board of Education and myself are committed to making those decisions, to engage in those discussions so that we're setting up our students for success. So I'm looking forward to future conversations and, and engaging on this journey with all of you. Thank you. Thank you, Superintendent. And with that, we will adjourn this meeting at nine fifty-two PM.